Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the -- actually, we're back out of recess. And it is Friday the 13th, and it is 8:34 a.m. So Commissioner Beck, could you take role, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Ingham?
Here.
Commissioner Burt?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Armio?
Commissioner Manus?
I'm here.
Commissioner Brower?
Present.
Commissioner Klausha Silage?
No, I think she said she would not be here.
Chair Gibson?
Oh, I'm here.
Partially. Vice Chair Correa?
Yeah, absolutely true.
Secretary Beck? There are eight present. We do have a quorum.
Very much, and we're now on to item number three, which is public comment.
I think we have two people lined up for public comment. First is Jana Van -- Jana Holguin. Jana, please remember to spell your last name for the court.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. My name is Jana Holguin, J.A.N.A., last name Holguin, H.O.L.G.U.I.N. Alma continues to operate in blatant noncompliance with the OMA, the New Mexico Public Records laws, and charter school requirements. Complaints have been filed, yet there are no consequences despite clear evidence of these violations. The school persistently blocks public participation in meetings. Virtual access is either denied outright or undermined by technical failures such as the last meeting's sound issues. Additionally, the school fails to provide a way for public comment via webcast, a requirement mandated by Chapter 22, Article 8b, NMSA 1978, Section 7. These repeated failures silence the community and reflect an alarming disregard for transparency and accountability. The actions of the school's administrator and governing board are indefensible. The administrator's recording of me before and after a meeting while I was in my vehicle is blatant harassment. The board's justification citing, quote, "an abundance of caution" is baseless and absurd. Caution for what? For attending a public meeting they improperly designated as virtual-only in direct violation of the OMA? Equally troubling is the behavior of the governing council president's husband, who is also a board member. Instead of intervening to stop the administrator's harassment, bullying, and intimidation tactics, he laughed, encouraged it, and excused it. This behavior violates the school's own bylaws, Article 2F and Article 5E under conduct, and sends a clear message harassment, dishonesty, and disregard for the law are tolerated. When concerns are brought to the board, they are dismissed and grievances are met with falsehoods. For example, the board claimed the meeting listed as virtual-only allowed public participation, yet they failed to address the locked doors that physically barred the public access. Claiming compliance while actively excluding the public is deceitful and unacceptable. As Commissioner Brower aptly noted, culture eats strategy for breakfast. Under this administration and board, the culture at Alma is defined by broken relationships, eroded trust, false claims, and a blatant disregard for legal and ethical standards. Positive outcomes cannot be expected when such a toxic culture prevails. It is past time to address these ongoing issues and restore accountability and integrity to Alma. I urge you to hold Alma accountable and ensure compliance with the standards and laws designed to protect our schools and their communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana, and I appreciate you keeping that to two minutes exactly. Next, we have Janet Van Koblin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Janet Van Koblin. Last name is two words. First word V.A.N. space C.O.B.L.I.J.N. I'm just reiterating what Jana has said and also adding, it's interesting, we continue to not get any information about what is actually going on at Alma, although one of their most recent postings says, "See, the art program is alive and well with the one unlicensed art teacher." What this year now, at least, year and a half, has shown us that no matter what we do, no matter what we find deficient or illegal, apparently just doesn't matter. It's pretty depressing, and yet we will continue. And even though it seems like it's just a few of us who are calling in every month, there still are plenty of people who are invested in seeing this. Don't want to say resolved, I want to say justice is done. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Sam Obenshane is not on.
So item number four, we have one commissioner whose term of service is ending on December 30th, and then we have a new member that has been elected. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the term of Commissioner Armio. I know she is deeply dedicated to serving students and families in her district and across New Mexico. She and her husband helped found a charter school in Albuquerque and is still very much attached. She still serves on the governing council there, so that her commitment and dedication to students and children in New Mexico should not go unnoticed. So I just want to thank her for serving children in New Mexico.
I just also want to thank her for a real smooth transition from her being secretary to me being secretary, giving me her famous Excel spreadsheet that I could edit and manipulate and be able to do. So I appreciate her help on that.
Thank you very much. Sam Obenshane is coming on. I had sent a message out to him indicating that we would like to introduce him, but I guess his schedule doesn't permit it. I did not hear back from him. So we'll wait till January, and that'll be his first meeting, and we can introduce Sam. Sam sat in the director's chair for a time. He served as a leader in charter schools and, most recently, was teaching at a charter school. So his understanding and knowledge of charters will certainly help as he comes on. Processes change, but the charter world, the commitment is still there, and that doesn't change. So looking forward to seeing Sam in our January meeting. Okay. Item number five, school highlights and spotlights. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, I just want to say that I attended on November 25th the library and technology lab opening at Cottonwood Classical. It was an awesome event. It's named after one of the founding teachers. I can't remember her name. Dr. G or whatever they call her. But it was a wonderful event with a lot of people there, and it's a beautiful new library and beautiful new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Correa?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge, please, the McCurdy Charter School in the West Bend River Valley. They were awarded with the -- from the Public Charter Schools of New Mexico with Charter School of the Year. Way to go, McCurdy. Thank you for all you do for our kids.
So I'd like to, and I apologize, I don't -- I thought I saved the exact title, but there are a number of charter school teachers throughout the state that have been recognized and are part of, and I'm just going to refer to it as a teacher leader program. I'm going to have to find it. Brande Bernard of Solar Collegiate, Shannon Byer of Albuquerque School of Excellence, Melania Boussard of Pecos Cyber Academy, Jessica Castro Bolina, J. Paul Taylor Academy, Taysha Holloway Digital Arts and Technology Academy, Elizabeth Long, Albuquerque Collegiate, Andrea Lopez, Cottonwood Classical, Asia Curry of Rio Galinas Charter School, and the 2024-26 Teach Plus New Mexico Advocacy Fellows are Chelsea Granillo of Vista Grande and Joyce Holmes of Sixth Grade Academy in Lovington. And I apologize, I'm going to have to reopen this because I lost some of the -- I couldn't get at the full picture. Because I know there's other teachers I'm missing. I dropped off at -- I dropped off with Andrea Lopez of Cottonwood Classical.
Okay. We have -- here.
Okay, thanks. Michael Mack of Albuquerque Charter Academy, Joaquin Sanchez of South Valley Academy, Lauren Scott of Mountain Mahogany, Zeta Sherrell of Alma de Arte Charter High School. Thanks. And I think it's all part of the Teach Plus program that they're being recognized through. Yes, thank you, and congratulations to all of them. That's a significant number of teachers, and it requires a commitment. So, and the idea that these schools are helping to support teachers to improve the craft. Congratulations to all of them. Anyone else? Okay. Item number six, the consent agenda. Commissioner Correa?
Thank you, Chair Gibson. I'd like to pull off, for a separate discussion, the item 12, which is the governing body bylaws for the New Mexico School for the Arts, so that it can be addressed separately.
All right. That'll be the next item we talk. So if there are no other changes, I move to approve the consent agenda with the change of removing item number 12.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correa?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Attorney Beck, there are eight votes for and zero votes against. The motion passes.
Okay. So then that brings us to item number seven, which would be the item removed from the Well, I don't --
I just wanted to -- Dr. Kaplan is here from New Mexico School for the Arts to have the -- if there's something that we need to know about this before we vote on it, or something, Dr. Kaplan, that you want to let us know, tell us about why this is here. Oh, you have to press it on until that little light turns green.
I had to take off my glasses to see, which is unusual for most people. Good morning, I'm Dr. Kaplan. I'm chair of the governing council at New Mexico School for the Arts.
I'm sorry, could you just spell your last name for the record?
Kaplan, K.A.P.L.A.N. Thank you. I just wanted to provide you with an update. The governing council members have been revising all the school policies. We decided to do that every year or two to make sure that they're current and up to date, and part of that process involved revising the governing council bylaws, which hadn't been revised since the charter was approved in 2010. So we made some changes to it. We took out language that really no longer actually fit or applied to the New Mexico School for the Arts. We made it more current. We ran everything by our lawyer, who approved everything for us. What we also did, though, is that we added a ethical responsibility, code of ethics, for the governing council members. It certainly, you know, everybody on the current governing council gets along and is really no problem, but we're looking towards the future for people that will come and be governing council members when those of us who are on the council will leave. And so we want to just make sure that there's no problems moving forward, as we've heard in other charter schools. So we added a code of ethics for all the governing council members to be aware of.
So, Dr. Kaplan, is there any chance that you can have the Supreme Court do the same thing?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, it would be. So I know that our attorney, Ms. Barnes, had told me that one of the things, and I think that it might be that you included it as well, and that's language around when -- and this isn't just for you, it's a lot of schools are adopting this. Should your board drop to having less than a quorum, to be notifying the PEC, is that now included in the bylaws?
Unfortunately, it is not, and I noticed that, I think this morning, that there's a request for governing councils to change their bylaws to include a section. So we'll go back and we'll address that in our bylaws and send it off to you again.
You don't need to come again for that. We'll just do that automatically for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any special performances you want to let those of us in the north know about that are coming up for the holidays?
You missed a great music concert last night. Tonight is the poetry slam at the school from 6:00 to 8:00.
Great.
Missed the student showcase fair, like they were selling art or something.
That's going -- oh, yes, that is going on. They have -- the visual artists are having a sale. It started last evening. It'll be this evening from 5:00 to 6:00, and tomorrow from 10:00 until 2:00, students are selling their artwork. The students get to keep half of the proceeds, and the other half of the proceeds go to the visual arts department to pay for additional supplies.
Excellent.
So thank you for reminding me. I forgot, and I was there last night.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Kaplan.
So I move that the Public Education Commission approve the governing board bylaw changes for New Mexico School for the Arts.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correa?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Sorry. We are on to item number eight, which is discussion of possible action on school relocation amendment for La Academia Dolores Huerta. So commissioners, we've had discussions several times about the unfortunate -- oh, and actually, Sylvie's here. I didn't -- sorry, I didn't see you. So if you want to come up, come on. I did not realize you were here. No, we don't have to take any action on it. So we don't have to take any action on it. Yeah.
No.
We -- no. No.
They're okay. Correct. Exactly.
Yeah, but they've still -- Yeah, you have to press it hard. Keep your finger on it. There you go.
There we go.
So just for the record, your name, spell your last name, and what role you're holding.
So Sylvie Galván de Lucero, it's a mouthful there on the last name, G.A.L.V.A.N. space D.E. space L.U.C.E.R.O. I am the head administrator-supervisor of La Academia Dolores Huerta in Las Cruces, New Mexico.
So thanks for coming up. Commissioners, we have all of the materials that are required for the notification. And so I guess I'll just ask, how is it going?
Well, it's a little stressful. We start physically moving next week on Monday, so we've been granted access starting next week on the 16th. So I left everybody back home busily packing, taking final inventory, one last check of everything, and make sure everything is clearly labeled and ready for the moving trucks. So a little stressful, a little nervous to wrap up the school year this way, but also excited to kind of get settled in our new homes.
So did you -- so how did it go with parents?
Actually, surprisingly well. I will be the first to admit that I was incredibly nervous to address it and present it to the parents, because we are going to be sharing space with a high school, and I knew that that would be a concern. We've had three separate parent meetings ever since everything became official to address any concerns, and really, their biggest concerns is, how can we help you and what can we do to help you get there? And once we assured them, we've invested some money into some security gates, like you see at concerts and stuff, to kind of block off no-entry areas and stuff, to block off spaces, so kids won't be trying to cross into areas of the hallway where they're not allowed, even though it is very separate already, but we thought we'd take that extra step. So parents were happy to know that we took the time to do that, and yeah, it was received incredibly well. Just one parent just kept saying, "I just don't understand why we have to move." And I said, "Well, you can go talk to Las Cruces Public Schools," because that's really where it comes down to. But they're so far so good. I haven't had any complaints, so.
So you didn't lose any?
No, actually, we've gained a few, because they know that we're going to be more centrally located a little bit. So we've actually gained a handful of students. We only have one that already told us that she won't be joining us when we move, mostly because her mom works at a local middle school, and it'll just be easier to take her to school with her. But it's only been that one, but we've actually gained three since, because of the move, so we're offsetting that.
Great. And I know you haven't quite moved yet. We're looking to --
To the future?
Next, yeah.
Yeah, so we've continued to look and search. Chair Gibson, you're familiar with Las Cruces. There's not a lot of options. We did find one location in the Old Messia area, and we were really excited, but once we got the capacity certificates from the fire department, we realized that already at our current enrollment, we would be exceeding capacity once we included staff, and it would leave us no room to grow. So as much as we loved the location, it wasn't going to work. We did find another building, but what they were asking as far as the financial commitment was way more than we could possibly afford at the current moment, so we continued the search. So every GC meeting, that is the main point of discussion, what have we seen, what have we found? We were looking at a building that was previously occupied by Explore Academy, but we were informed that it does not have the proper fire suppression systems, and just to update those to house a school would really exceed the budget currently. And also, it didn't have the proper division of classrooms, so we'd have to invest some money in creating those divisions. So again, so far, we've kind of hit a dead end every turn, but we haven't given up. So we're still looking. Every day, I drive around and try to make sure I don't wreck while I'm looking to see what the number is on that building, so.
So are you -- is there any possibility of looking at land and putting portables up?
Definitely. It's just finding land in a reasonable area. Right now, a lot of the land that is available is way up at the foothills of the Oregon Mountains that is within a financial reasonable aspect, but it's growing a lot in that direction, so that might be an option as well.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Commissioner Ingham?
I'm interested, is the -- or Academy was -- had occupied it, and something changed. Is PSFA telling you that the -- that building is -- the fire suppression system is required? Is it -- is it PSFA that's asking for that?
It's both PSFA and the realtor that is in charge of that building. That is why Explore Academy was no longer in there and moved to another building as quickly as it could.
It was a temporary location until where they are at was ready.
It wasn't --
It wasn't going to be a permanent.
Dispensation to use it for a little while.
Right.
Okay. The other concern I had is, it sounds like you're putting up gates in corridors, it sounds like, and have you already got that approved with your fire marshal? Because there are going to be some real specific requirements as far as what kind of hardware you use on those gates and how that can be accessed, because that's a real tricky issue, and it can be problematic.
No, I understand completely, and that was one of our main concerns. Like, if we have to evacuate the building, if something happens, you know, how easily is it to open up that gate and have those access? So we did discuss that with the fire department and make sure that we're in compliance with all of it.
I really hope you do, because in conversation with PSFA, they're very -- I mean, they're very anxious about occupying old buildings.
I understand.
And they would really like charter schools to be binding places with newer facilities. Obviously, that doesn't -- because what they want and what's reality, it doesn't really matter, but I would encourage you to keep -- be diligent to move forward on another property if you --
Oh, no, definitely. That is our ultimate dream, is to have our own place, so we're no longer having to face this type of situation.
Well, and I don't know the exact, but I think that we have had some success with some schools petitioning PSFA and the PSCOC to fund new projects. It's difficult and laborious, and there's some other options that we may be coming across soon, so keep abreast of that, and we're going to try and work with NFA to get some financing worked out as best as we can. Keep abreast of that if you can.
Good. No, no, thank you, definitely.
Microphone, please.
I move that the PEC accept the school relocation amendment set forth in the PEC folder, item eight, and that the change be reflected as an amendment to the charter contract. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Chair Brower?
Just Commissioner --
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. Well, yes. Ex-chair, ex-chair Brower.
Ex-chair Brower. Long week. Commissioner Ingham. Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you all. You have a good day.
We are on to item number eight, which is the introduction of new head...
Number nine.
Chair Gibson, Commissioners, Joe Dan Lovato is here as the new Head Administrator of San Diego Riverside, and I'm glad that he's there in person to meet you all. So that was an item on the consent agenda, and here he is. Joe Dan, please be sure to spell your last name for the court reporter, and welcome.
Very well. Good morning. I think everybody can hear me right. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission and Charter School Division. My name is Joe Dan Lovato. Joe Dan, J-O-E, space, capital D-A-N. You got a two-for-one this morning. That's my name. Don't call me Joe. Last name Lovato, L-O-V-A-T-O. Little bit about me. I grew up in New Mexico. I'm homegrown, as they would say. I'm from Roy, New Mexico, huge city up in the northeastern part of our beautiful state. I was recently with Turquoise Trail Charter School as a principal. I had the privilege of serving as their middle school principal for two years and as the principal of special projects and after-school time, before-school time programming. My first year there, I was honored to lead us to a Best of Santa Fe third place. Last year, we were Best of Santa Fe second place, and there's no doubt in my mind that had I been there a little bit longer, we would have got that first place. Formerly coming from Mark Armijo Academy, I know one of our Commissioner's husband's namesake of the school, where I was happy to lead them to a Governor STEM Challenge Championship title. And then there with 12 years for La Resiliana Leadership Academy, where I was a STEM Director and Science Educator. And also able to do different things for our students, such as bringing classes in cryptozoology and extraterrestrial investigations, which I think Commissioner Carrillo would be very interested in sitting in one of my classes. And now I'm humbled to sit here before you to be with San Diego Riverside Charter School as their new director and principal. Let's see, I served on many boards, including the New Mexico Science Teachers Association, the New Mexico Teacher of the Year Board, and currently am the Chair of Solari Collegiate Charter School's Board. So I'm here to stand for any questions that you might have for me this morning.
Well, for this piece of the agenda, I'm just going to say, glad to see you. Very helpful. Thank you very much. You know, it's... I'm hopeful, and I appreciate you taking on the challenge as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that.
Just want to echo what Chair Gibson said. Very happy that you're taking this on. I know you know the challenges that lay before you, and as I'm fond of saying, hope is not a strategy. So I'm sure you're going to come back with us, to us at some point, and let us know what you're doing and then repeat... And let us know how you're doing.
Absolutely, Commissioner. We will make a solid and sound plan moving forward.
Thanks for your service.
So now we're on to item number 10. You can stay there, which is you. That's why I was separating out the happy from the...
Quick question?
Sure.
Are you going to stay on your board chair position at Solari?
I do. Now that we're no longer a founding board, I feel that I'm in a position to be able to support that head administrator at least till the end of this school year. My plan is to step down so that I can focus on this huge endeavor that I've taken on.
Thank you.
Okay. So item number 10 is discussion of possible action under the intervention ladder on San Diego Riverside Charter School. So we have... We have a report. We have the CSD audit of actions that we asked for an audit of the condition document so that we know whether they've completed or whether they haven't completed what was supposed to be done, most of it by July 1. I'm using that as, you know, by the end of last school year.
And Chair Gibson, I'm happy to provide some information about that.
Certainly.
Okay. Commissioners, you have a few documents in your materials that are helping with this item, and the audit document that the Charter Schools Division compiled is item 10A2. And as best we could, because as Mr. Lovato shared, he's fairly new to the school and learning on a daily basis about what has occurred at the school prior to his arrival. So he and I have spent a lot of time talking about what has gone on at the school, and so this is, if you will, a work in progress. And my apologies, but I do think that it's been a really helpful exercise for both Mr. Lovato and I to take a look at these items again, and then for him to go back to the school and do a little bit more research. So this document was created as of December 6, but just yesterday, I believe, or perhaps it was the day before, there was some additional data brought to the fore. So I'll let Mr. Lovato speak to that because the CSD has not had the ability to review the data that he submitted. When we last talked about this school and looked at the conditions document, and again, thank you, thank you, Missy, for putting it up. I'll be scrolling through as I speak as well. One of the items was the end-of-the-year proficiency and growth results from the internal school assessment that is used as a baseline. And the school did, in fact, complete the end-of-year assessment and provided us with the figures that you see before you now. One of the items for this discussion, item 10B, is a little bit more information about the proficiency and growth data because we asked the school to send student files, and Dr. Russell will be able to speak to that. But for now, let's just keep scrolling through. So I would say condition one was completed. Condition two, we say, was completed in terms of the transition year checklist and in terms of the unaddressed items from Hamez Valley Public Schools incomplete because although the math dash was completed and the student needs assessment was completed, the revised internal control policies and procedures had not yet been adopted by the governing board at the time that this document was completed. They were set to be adopted by the board on December 10, and Mr. Lovato can share with us if that is actually taking place. And the other item was the Finance and Audit Committees establishing the... The names and of the people who sit on the Finance and Audit Committees. Although they gave us the names, they were not posted to the school's website last time we checked. I'm going to pause and see if you want me to keep going through the conditions as I am right now, or if you want to ask any questions about the first two conditions before moving on.
So can you verify that... We're waiting for the vote to take place. Are the revised internal control policies, was that done on the 10th?
Madam Chair, yes. That was completed.
Okay. But the committees' names and...
We are currently working to establish that so that, with hopes that next week, as we revamp some of our website, these things are posted.
So I guess I just need a little clarification. The concern at this moment in time is not that those committees don't exist, it's just that they're not posted?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So they've been meeting?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. I feel a little better. I'm just... So unfortunately, Mr. Lovato is here, and he takes the brunt of, you know, he's inherited all of this. And the only thing I'm going to say is these actions that solely required the board to work, it didn't require any head administrator input. So it didn't matter what was going on at the main office, who was there, if there was no one there. These actions simply required the board to do this. So that's where I'm really challenged with, the fact that it's taken now this long to get that done when all they... That was a process that they alone were responsible for and didn't need anything else. So thank you, because I think you're putting fire under them. I really appreciate that. But it's still that growing concern that the board continues to not feel any real responsibility to honor deadlines at all.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if I may. I'm really excited. I know one of the items later on in this... In this document is the mentorship. We're working really closely with PCSNM. We've established some great folks there to provide mentorship for our board, as well as myself. And again, I think many of these items that, as you're pointing out, should have been done, you know, with ample time. We are getting back on track with these items, and people are receiving the support that they require in order to get these done in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Shall I continue, Chair Gibson?
No. Commissioner Ingham wants to say something.
Yeah, I agree with the challenge here is that that's kind of a reversal of roles, that you would have to be chiding the board to do their actions. That makes me really concerned. And do you have any new board members?
Yes, so my first board meeting was night before last, and one of my... One of my goals was to recruit at least one new board member, and we do have one prospective new board member that we will be vetting. They will be vetting, and they will be hopefully taking action on in January.
With some level of expertise in some portion of the board's responsibility?
What's that?
With some level of expertise in the board responsibilities?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
This is the concern, obviously, that we have.
Sure.
Is that this has been an ongoing saga of just unresponsiveness, which in most worlds, in my world, that's... You just get dismissed. You're unresponsive, you cease to exist. And so I hope that the existing board members would take this matter seriously and not keep us continually having to chide them to performance. That's just as unacceptable. And if that continues to be the case, we can't... We can't continue to support that.
Completely understandable.
So can I just quickly link on to that? There's a little bit of tension. You know, I know boards very much rely on head administrators to do a lot of the postings and getting agendas out and things like that, but for a head administrator to be involved in the recruitment of their bosses, that's where there's, you know, a little... Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. You know, so that's where, you know, I appreciate the thought and wanting to get this straight, but there is that, you know, there's that fine line, you know, that head admins and boards, you know, and they get oftentimes kind of blurred.
Sure. And I think it's something larger with the charter schools, that, you know, many of our schools are appointed positions and are voted on. And being on a board myself, I think it's really critical to find the right fit for the right school, along with the right fit for the board. So these are merely just recommendations. Still, it is up to the board on whether they would take action. I am highly encouraging them, moving forward, that they do recruit new members, and new members that they are familiar with that can step in and help support their endeavor.
I understand they're appointed. I fully get that. But there's... They're appointed, and their one job is to hire and oversee the head administrator, so that that conversation is a little concerning.
Sure.
Commissioner Carrillo?
This is board-related also.
Sure.
So right now, you have a seven-member board? Is that correct?
I believe there's only five.
Five right now?
Yes.
Okay. Is your goal to have seven?
I think that would be a question for our chair, but being that I'm on a board myself, I think that seven to nine folks on a board would be a sufficient board.
Good idea, because then you can have subcommittees and things without always having to post notices. So I'm happy to hear that people are cognizant of recruiting new members. Also, always a good idea to have a bench in your back pocket, at least like two or three people that you're thinking of, because you never know what happens. Life happens. People leave town, they do whatever. So I'll let you know where I'm coming from in terms of the board. I'll have confidence when they display their competence, because when it was renewal time a year ago, right about this moment, this room was full. They brought a number of people from the tribal community, as well as a lot of little kids, because they know that... Because they know that we're... We get taken by that. But I had no problem saying, and I'll say it to you, that this is on you, because for the last 20 years, and speaking to the elders and as well as the... For the last 20 years, you've neglected this school. And so that's why I'm glad you're working with PCSNM, so the board really understands their role, their active role in working with you. Also, in keeping with OMA, we have... We find we have a lot of trouble with some of our tribal schools in following the OMA directives, constantly going into executive session when they shouldn't, meeting with not posting correctly. And I know you're very familiar with OMA, but... And so just... And I'm really hoping that Matt and the others at PCSNM give them the direction and skills they need. So for me personally, that's something I'm really going to be looking at, is the board.
Chair Gibson, I just wanted to make you aware that the Chair of the Board, Ms. Creel, is in the audience. I don't know if you would like for her to be promoted to the panel and to be able to speak?
Yeah, that's fine. So I fully get not hiring a mentor for someone who's an interim, you know? So that, you know, that I have no issue with, and I'm glad that they're coming in, because I think anyone that you have an opportunity to lean on is going to be really important, you know, sounding boards, whatever. But the fact that, once again, the board didn't move forward to get the mentorship for themselves, you could have been here a whole lot earlier, because they did, you know, there wasn't that guidance, that help for the board to get them to that place where we are now. So that's where, once again, the board could have started the mentorship for themselves sort of the school year and waited for the mentorship of the head administrator whenever they got the new head administrator in, but they delayed on it all. And the two are very separate items, you know? And once again, we're sitting here because things weren't... Haven't been completed, and I think if someone had been able to be there, you know, because I know behind the scenes, there have been people there, but they haven't been in an official capacity. So it's, you know, it's hard. So that's just... It's unfortunate. Can... I just quickly go back to the items that are noted as complete with the Hemez Pueblo cap, so that... And maybe the director can... I don't know who...
Yes.
Did the audits of the conditions from Hemez Pueblo's... Hemez Public Schools Corrective Action Plan? Who did that audit to note that...
Chair Gibson, Commissioners, I worked with Joe Dan to take inventory and do the audit of these items. So the school has a math dash plan in place and a student needs assessment. So the school has a math dash plan in place and a student needs assessment. And the two items that were incomplete had to do with the board internal control policies and posting the names of the Finance and Audit Committee membership.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes. So moving on to item three, as you've mentioned, Commissioners, we know that the school has a contract currently with Public Charter Schools New Mexico Consultants. Teresa Archuleta, Diego Gallegos has been working with the school and quite frankly, has, has been support to the head administrator. I don't know how frequently they have met with the board, but there is a, there is some support in place from PCSNM. The other administrative mentor that was identified early on with the condition document that we were updated before said that Dr. Christina Commander, who comes from Walatoa, would serve as the administrative mentor. However, when Mr. Lovato and I looked at the, looked at the, or discussed the contract with Ms. Commander, it was for teaching and not administrative mentorship. So I think that, that is, that is why that was labeled as incomplete. Because there was some instructional transformation work that has been done working in, in collaboration with Walatoa High Charter School. But unless Mr. Lovato has found an MOU since we last spoke, I don't believe that there is a signed MOU between the two schools. And I'll let him respond to see if he found any evidence of an MOU.
So my understanding was that the administrative mentorship was also coming from PCSNM. Am I incorrect on that?
That, that is now recently occurring. I can't speak to that prior to me getting here. Like I said, I've been here, I think, 15 days to today. But there was not a contract initiated. I did uncover an MOU this week that stated that Dr. Commander would be serving in that capacity. However, PCSNM is offering that form of mentorship with the board and myself. We had the guidelines that I'm hoping that when we come into January, we can establish a, a solid and sound mentor that can be available to myself moving forward through the rest of the school year.
So I had conversations with folks from PCSNM that they were just waiting for the contract to be executed for the administrative. So this is like new. So I'm, I'm surprised because there's been multiple conversations with PCSNM and the school about that mentorship going back to June.
Yeah, and there might be some confusion. I think there is on my end too, to make sure that I get all the information. I didn't ask those prior questions. What was presented in front of me was that Dr. Commander was working in that capacity. However, PCSNM has also stepped in as well. I don't want to say that it's a double mentorship. I think it might be just more of somebody that's giving sound advice. It's more for the board and making sure that we're all connected and collaborating, you know,
Okay.
in the right way.
Right, thanks. And I apologize, I thought there was a, an item further down because it separated out on the agenda. But can we go back to item one? Because I know the deputy director did some work on the data. So could you just give us an update on that?
Of course. Chair Gibson, Commissioners, I did look at the most recent data submission. Again, this is from several weeks ago. So if you've submitted anything in the last week, I have not looked at it. And I still had questions. The NWA data, I still had issues with it. CSD is planning on a visit on either January 9th or 10th to the school. And I'm going to sit down with Mr. Lovato and Ms. Garcia and look at all of it and so that we can clear everything up.
Okay.
Because there are.
So whenever, whenever you get that, it needs to be provided.
There, there, Madam Chair, there was a, there was an update as of this week. And going through the data, I think what was presented before you with respect to the end of year last year was something like 14% in student proficiency in ELA. We've gone back and reviewed that. That should be 8% student proficiency in ELA. It was reported that there was 0%, student proficiency in math. We've uncovered that it's actually 6% in proficiency. Still nowhere's near what we would like our students to be. And yeah, we're going to be working. This is one of our number one endeavors right now is ensuring that our students are receiving adequate education and increasing these numbers in proficiency for ELA and math.
Okay, I appreciate that. But we'll just need the update for next month, so thank you.
So does that mean this is not complete, it's incomplete?
Correct. It sounds like these figures are incorrect, Commissioner Ingham, and that we will need to change the results based on what Mr. Lovato has uncovered.
If there are more questions for this specific aspect, I know Dr. Commander and Ms. Shaw, I think, are online. They worked on these dashboards, specifically Dr. Commander. They could probably provide a little bit more in-depth information.
Well, I think at this point in time, because we don't have that in front of us, it would, it would be better for us if we could ask those questions once we get the information.
Okay, sure.
You know, that would just be easier for us. And I, I appreciate that you're, you know, you're, you're working on this. I do.
Shall I go on, Chair Gibson? All right, I hear, hearing no response. No, I, okay. So, so now we're on to the strategic goals associated with condition three and looking at the instructional transformation. And there does seem to be a little bit of overlap with some of these. But this is specifically saying there should be an MOU between the San Diego Riverside and Walatoa. And although we have clear evidence that Walatoa has worked with the school, we did not find an MOU in place. Again, this was an item to be placed on the governing board agenda for San Diego Riverside on December 10th. And Mr. Lovato, I'm not sure if they, if the board actually passed an MOU.
Yes, Madam Chair and, and members of the Commission, as of December 10th in our, my first meeting, we did approve an MOU that was presented before them months ago. Right now, what I'm working on is trying to ensure that this is also established with Walatoa High School so that all parties are on the same page.
Thank you for that update. So then.
I just want to say, we did not, we did not direct that an MOU be created. We directed that the mentorship and the strategic planning take place. If the parties determine that an MOU would best serve that, then that's what needs to be done. But nowhere in this condition does it say that there has to be an MOU. So that's up to, you know, you figuring out there. I believe there had been an MOU from when they were with HEMES Public Schools. That may have carried over. I'm not fully clear on that anymore. But we did not specify that an actual MOU had to be created.
And Chair Gibson, my first review for you and the Commission was a high-level analysis of the condition language as the PEC approved, which is what you see in boldface right now. If you scroll down, Ms. Brown, to the items that are considered the strategic goals, these were set by the school and submitted to the PEC and signed by the board of, of San Diego Riverside. So I did a drill down analysis of these particular items. Although the PEC did not say that the school must have the MOU with Walatoa, that is what the board agreed to when they signed and sent you this more specific plan. So that's what I analyzed. And I could walk through those, that's what I'm walking us through. But thank you for that clarification. And if there should be some change on the specific strategic goals, I, I think that it would be important for the school as well as the Charter Schools Division to have an understanding of the expectations of the PEC for any potential change in those strategic goals slash actions and activities that the school originally presented. So that's where that's coming from. The next thing the school said that they would do is to share staff with Walatoa. And you will see that that is complete. There are contracts in place for science, math, and ELA, ELA teachers who are going to San Diego Riverside and teaching courses.
So let me just ask, did the board vote for the MOU on the 10th?
Yes, we did vote in favor for that.
Okay.
The next item is the Indigenous Culture Development and identifying ways to integrate culture into the school. And this is something that is evidenced with the school activities in partnership with HEMES Pueblo occurring and affecting the calendar so that students can participate in tribal events. The final action step under this is to, again, this is repeat from above, which is to working with PCSNM mentor, update governing board policies and procedures. And so the school has begun, because when we look at the timeline, it says, did it begin in June? And so the mentors have begun working with the school. So the updated policies and procedures are not final, but it was to start in June and continue. So we, we gave credit for that work getting started. For condition 4A, this is about the student academic growth and a robe, and the school creating a robust and strategic educational plan with comprehensive teacher training. And the CSD rated this, this condition 4A as incomplete because although the school has begun to make progress on many items, they didn't start immediately as indicated in the proposed timeline. And we can scroll down to the specific actions for teacher training that start with Agile Mind Math. And I know that the school was able to obtain training in November. I don't think that it began in July, but there was a training that has taken place.
So this is where I am challenged at this point in time. I don't want to have to keep going month after month after month looking at this document that really should have been finalized in, by our August meeting. Just, you know, because the school was supposed to do this. This was not supposed to be, and this is ongoing thing. So this, you know, for me, at this moment in time, they've either done it or they haven't done it. And then we, we deal with that. We take whatever appropriate action. And then the school gets to move on with what they need to do right now. And we're not continuing to go back to this and saying, oh, that's still incomplete. You know, in December, what was supposed to be due in August can't still be incomplete. It's either yes or a no at this moment in time. There may be reasons why there's a no, we didn't hire that administrator. Fine, but we're, we're beating a dead horse here with this. And I don't find, I don't think it's, I don't think it's productive for you. I think it's great that you have conversations about what the condition was and what the school needs to do. That was the goal. But I think we, we have to now say, this wasn't done, plain and simple. And 99% of this, or 100% of it, is on the board that they didn't take the action that they were supposed to move on. There was a head administrator in place, was interim, but he was being paid to be the head administrator. So the work was either done or it wasn't done. And if there has to be further action, if the Commission determines that there should be further action on the intervention ladder, fine, we move on that way. But I don't want to have to keep this on the agenda every month to keep looking at this to say, have they finished what they were supposed to do back in August? There's going to be an annual report. Yes? I forget what's like, um, year, so there'll be.
There will not be an annual report because last year, 2324, was their last year as a district charter. There will be a report for the current school year.
Right.
But that won't be done until the end of this school year.
But I think there's new data that we need and want. And I'm, I just don't find any reason why we're, we're going back. We close this out, plain and simple. I don't know how everyone else feels. But this is just, you know, an exercise, I think, in futility for everyone involved.
And Chair Gibson?
I recognize Commissioner Carrillo, I'm sorry.
So in terms of the data for this school year, 2324, Ms. Russell, when would we expect to have that?
For 2324?
Is this 24? Oh, that's right.
I mean for 2425, not until the fall.
Okay, so what's interesting to me in, my understanding of, and this is an issue, but it's combined with, is of why we had epicenter was to have more immediacy in getting results, not having to wait. No, I know you're shaking your head no, but my head's going yes. Because in terms of, I remember very first speaking with these people and floating this idea with Commissioner Manis and Commissioner Taylor, the idea was immediacy so we, so schools wouldn't have to wait forever to take action. That having been said, because that's, that's going to have to be revisited because otherwise it's like, what the heck? It's just, I, I think it was someone with CSD saying, now we just have more things we've got to do. But in terms of what Chair Gibson was saying, Joe Dan, do you want to be called Joe Dan in my liege or?
Joe Dan, Joe Dan's fine.
I'm kidding, okay. So Joe Dan, I can't tell you how many times we are told, we're working on it, we're planning on it, this is our intent, till we're blue in the face and six months goes by. And so I just want to echo Chair Gibson's frustration with that. There's a point at which it's yes or it's no. And if it's no and it stays no, then we take the actions we need to take.
Sure. And Chair Gibson and Commissioner Carrillo, what, what I'm understanding now by going through this the last few days is there are some things that were completed. There's just a breakdown in communication to ensure that these things were documented in a timely fashion. And so, for example, this Agile Mind PD, we, we did uncover that there is continuous professional development. And this individual who we did contract with Walatoa is utilizing this as the cornerstone for their, their curriculum in the classroom. And so I, I think part of it is just making sure that that communication is established. There are many items that we went through, me and Ms. Chavez reviewed. And as I started looking at things, these things were done. They just weren't either voted on. They just weren't either voted on on the Board's end or they just weren't documented accurately. And so that's where I'm stepping in to try to, to see where these things fell within that timeline. But like I said, with, with the exception, I know whenever this was first presented to me, the completion of the HEMIS Valley Public School Corrective Action Plan was marked as incomplete. That was one of the first things that Ms. Shaw showed me because it was my understanding that without the completion of that, many of these things on, on this list wouldn't be able to be completed in the first place. It was just a matter of ensuring that we could locate that document in, in the drive, from what I understand, which was shared. And again, documenting that these things were completed in ample time. There are some things that, you know, we'll call it for what it is, the ball was dropped. But many of these items, they were just completed. We just had to go and backtrack to find out when they were exactly completed and document those accurately.
Beck and then Commissioner Taylor. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Taylor.
So, so I, I, my feeling on this really is that you, you were thrown into a bullring, man, you know? And so to, to me, I feel like we have to be able to extend the time and the grace for you to, to, to be able to figure out which direction you need to go and, and so forth. So you have a list of things that are, that are incomplete. You have a list of things that you know that you need to work on. You're, you're, you're experienced, you're aware of what needs to be done. I, I do feel like this is sort of almost punitive for you and it creates a lot of red tape for you to have to work through before you can really get to the meat of the matter. So I, I'm, I'm in favor, I don't know what that looks like, but I'm certainly in favor of, of allowing you the, the, the time and the grace to be able to, to figure out what direction we need to go. And, and if that's in continued consultation with C S D, that's great, you know, that's great. They're, they're a great resource for those kind of things. So, but I, I agree, I don't think we need to hear this every month, you know, and go over these things, so.
Okay, and Beck and then Commissioner Brower.
Yeah, I, I fully agree with Commissioner Taylor and, and what, what you're saying. You know, I, I'm wholly impressed with the last half hour with you. I feel really good that you're there. And, and we know what's going on. We've been dealing with it for two years, we see it. So I think we have to give you the, the time to be able to do what you need to do and it seems like you're doing it and you're doing it correctly and efficiently with speed. So I'm with you on that, for sure.
Commissioner Brower and then Commissioner Burt.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm going to join that bandwagon and say just first off, thank you. Thank you for, for jumping into this, knowing that you, I know full well you knew the challenges that you were going to be jumping in on and I just really appreciate you, Mr. Lovata, for, for jumping in. I know you only in an ancillary way and I, I never worked directly with you, but I just know every place you've been, like, you've done really good work and, and people respect you and, and I think very highly of you. I also want to just give credit where credit's due with the Board as well, with the Governing Council for making this hire, you know, it's one of the three main things that you're responsible for. And Ms. Creo, I think this is a really good hire. And I think that you're going to be bringing a lot of really great, great skillsets into this. And so I do agree, like, there, there's, I can already hear Commissioner Creo, so we don't have time to wait, what are we going to wait, thirty days, sixty days, ninety days to see change? Two years to see change? And I feel it too, like I want to see the schools thrive. And, and we also know we need time. And to give you time to, I mean, just the way that you came in and presented today, it's, it's, you're prepared, you're getting, when did you, when was your first day?
My first official day was November eighteenth. I was hoping to get some, some onboarding and the onboarding resulted in the end of the day with a letter from the previous administrator that went out to all charter leaders in the entire state. And so that was my first day on the job.
Well, happy almost anniversary of your first month. I think this is like an important thing for us to, you know, and we're a group of people who care deeply about schooling and, and kids and, and, and doing right. And, and so I feel the frustration of things that have not yet been done yet. And I know the Charter School Division is working hard to support as well. I love the fact that you're doing some of the bigger things like mentorship, getting that set up, seeing the two people who are working with P S A, P S C, the Public Charter Schools, let's go, acronym is not, not today, not today. I mean, I think those two people have such great experiences in multiple areas of education. So I, I just feel, I'm feeling like we're almost at that point. We're at the, we're at the, we're at the ear infection stage, is what I like to call it, where, you know, you start taking the medicine, we have a new person here, it gets maybe a little bit worse, like a earache does, like a ear infection, it gets worse before it gets better once you take medicine. But we're at that stage right now, we're at that, we're at that ear infection stage. So we're getting the medicine in, you're getting to know things. And I feel like I'm just excited about this. I'm not excited about where we are on some of these things, but I know that we're going to move forward, just like getting better from an ear infection does. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, I think my wife might agree. I, I sometimes am an ear infection to some people, but I appreciate the opportunity to, to correct this and put this back on track.
Just to be sure, you were the medicine, not the.
Okay.
Yeah, you're the, you're the, it gets a, I don't know, you know, it gets, it gets, like when you take medicine for an ear infection, I don't know, for me, it always gets worse.
Sure.
And then it progressively gets better quickly. And so that was my, I don't want you to leave with my metaphor backwards.
I only joke, thank you.
You've now been on antibiotics for almost a month. So now we're going, Commissioner Burt, oh, is your hand still up?
Yeah, I just took.
I can't see it.
I, I just took it down because I knew you were going to call on me next. Good morning, everyone, hi, Jo Dan. You know, ditto to what everyone already said. And also I do understand the, the frustration of going over this list. But my, my kind of feelings on it are, I think we tried for the last year plus to do this by kind of letting C S D and the school communicate with each other and then bring information to us, and I don't think that's been working. It feels like there's been not clear communication, I don't know, in any way, shape or form, towards us, from them, to that, like, I feel like the communication lines have been really not great over the past year. So I actually, I know it's like, I actually think it is helpful to go over the list because I do think this is the only opportunity that I've seen that the school gets clear expectations is when they're actually speaking with us directly. So I would actually propose that we do review the list, not if it's going to be that we're just frustrated every time that there are certain things that aren't done that should have been done, then yeah, we should stop reviewing the list. But I, what I actually think could be a helpful measure in order to go through and actually clear out some of these things is to get a report of the, what has happened over the course of the last month. And it just be kind of, you know, here's these, the last month, we were able to close out these two items. We're not going to get closure on a lot of these items for a while. I mean, it is going to take time. And especially when I hear things like, oh, this item was closed, we got the percentages of the last year proficiency, we're good to go on this one, and it actually wasn't correct, right? So to me, I, I think there's probably going to be more things that are going to be uncovered. You know, after one thing's done, probably two or three things are going to be added to the plate because of what you find and what, what happened. So I don't know if it necessarily has to be monthly, but I actually do think the clear expectations at this point are necessary because I don't want to get to a space where we're two, three months down the road, we haven't reviewed this, there's been communication happening behind the scenes, and then we're, we, they come to the P E C and we're like, these are the expectations, why isn't this happening, why isn't this happening? And there's not clear communication going on behind the scenes. And that's been my experience over the past year with this school and the process of how this has worked, is it feels clear to me when we send off and then chaos ensues and lack of communication or miscommunication happens and then things don't end up being completed the way that the P E C expectations are, at least on this list. I mean, I'm also going to remind, there's probably a whole other list for Mr. Lovato to have to do that has nothing to do with what we're overseeing right now. I mean, there's a whole, I, I, I am, this is a tiny little piece of turning around a school. Like this is like, you know, ten percent, we're at the tip of the iceberg kind of thing. So in addition, like I said, ditto to what everyone said, I do think, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to make a motion to move down the intervention ladder right now because I don't know what that's going to help. I don't see it, it helping because I don't think these things are going to be fixed. Like, as I review through all of these items, some of them, I guess, could be quick fixes, but there's a lot of systemic, deep things at this school that have to happen. And it's just not, you know, I don't see a resolution in the coming month, like realistically, to, to where we're going to just complete this and be like, this is done. That being said, obviously this is an urgent matter. There's kids in the school right now who are, are or are not being served. But I also, and this is my, this is always my kind of recommendation to, you know, when there's a hundred things on a plate of someone, the best thing to do is to not overreact to urgent matters. I mean, we have to, we, it has to be systemic, it has to be thoughtfully cleared out. It has to have like a reason why are we doing this item? Are we doing it to check it off the list for the P E C? Or are we doing it because it's going to increase student outcomes, right? And if they're going to do it to check it off the P E C, that could probably be done pretty quick. I mean, it's easy to like check things off and be like, yep, done. But if it's like part of a whole system of improvement of a school and there's a deeper meaning, a deeper reason behind why you're doing these items, it's much more complicated than checking the box off, off the list. So I don't, I, I mean, I'm conflicted because obviously I do, you know, my favorite thing to say is, you know, that's that kid's only third grade year right now. While every, all the adults are trying to figure it out, this is someone's only third grade year. And this is it, this is what they get, you know? And that is, that's hard to grapple with, I mean, it's very difficult to grapple with. The other option is that the school closes, right? I mean, like that's where we lead down. So I think if we're at a space where we have a new head administrator, we have a, a governing board mentor that's on board, mentors coming for the head administrator, like these things are gonna come. I do think it's going to take time to figure out. I'm also, I'm also wondering if the plan that was made with the governing board and the former administrator is the same plan that should be moving forward in the next school year, you know? So that's also, I mean, once again, if we're doing it to check off the box, that's one thing, but, and, and so are we going to require that that box gets checked because it was submitted to us and it has to get checked? But if it's not actually in the best interest of the school at this moment, should we continue doing that? So I also think it takes some time to figure out, is the plan that was developed the plan that should be continued moving forward? Or was that a Band-Aid fix, you know, until the permanent head administrator was going to be hired? I mean, it's, it's complicated and complex. And I do think that we as authorizers, we do have to have some patience in this exact moment because unless we're ready to start moving down a revocation path, I do think the alternative is that we provide the time and space and make sure the expectations are clear from our side as to exactly what the expectations are and how to accomplish those. I, I don't know if there's a different, like, if we take the checklist that's happened, remove the things that are done, create something that is, makes it very clear what the expectations are, you know? And that way, for example, like Chair Gibson said, with the item with the M O U, right? Okay, well, we need the plan, we don't need the M O U, right? From the P E C expectations, this is what, this is how you accomplish this clearly, kind of thing. So I do think there needs to be some clarity of exactly how to accomplish, what these things look like to be kind of closed out from our additional oversight. And I honestly, like, I, I don't envy Jo Dan's position, I don't envy Ms. Creo's position of trying to like figure this system out and create a system to, to do this. And, and I honestly, I'm, I'm definitely, I'm, I'm kind of just open. I hope some Commissioners have some answer to the balance of how do we do things urgently but productively? And my, my, my biggest worry is, you know, we, we create these barriers to allowing the change at the school to happen for the things that are most important and most urgent first, right? Like, is the posting on the website the most urgent thing? Or is it the teaching and learning in the classroom? I'm, I'm just trying to weigh, it's, it's, we're in a difficult, I think we're in a difficult position because the school's in such a difficult position, genuinely. It puts us in a bad spot. So that's kind of where my thoughts are. I don't, and like I said, my, my only suggestion is that we do somehow create some kind of system of communication that's directly, directly communicates P E C expectations, what the success looks like for that P E C expectation and being able to get reported on just what was able to be accomplished month over month. And maybe it's not that, you know, Mr. Lovato and Ms. Creo have to actually come, maybe it's just a C S D report of like, this is what's happening. But it also just seems like there's a lot of confusion, not, there's a lot of lack of organization of all this, of all this information. And it's not just from the school side, it is, it does seem to be from our side as well. So I would love for that to be cleared up moving forward.
So Julie wants to say something and then you can go.
I just wanted to outline where I think you are, what the rule does, what the contract negotiations did. You voted for a three-year contract for this school, which is short, and there are challenges to that. The condition compliance document was negotiated with that in mind and it was, it is very particular. It outlines things that the school wanted to do that were going to be in progress. So I, then the rule is looking at a record of performance for this school. You're six months into something and the school is just now kind of on, on the possible track. But you, that's, but you've also lost six months of a three-year term. So, so I think that the option, the intervention letter can lead to revocation, but it is also the process that leads you to help a school have clarity of that. So the compliance, the condition compliance document can be modified again under this new leadership and said, we wanted to fix math, here's our idea about fixing math. We wanted to, whatever it is, that can be looked at because that's where I think the clarity can come in. So from my view, at a minimum, the school should consider the condition compliance document and make it relevant to them right now. That doesn't mean it needs to have thirty items. If, if the new head administrator thinks that five items work, then great, propose that. But that should be the clarification. You have been placing schools on notices of concern when something didn't happen so that it was part of the record and then either put them back in good standing or, and then, you know, did something else. So whether you take action on that right now or not is up to you, but I think those are the tools that are available to you because as Chair Gibson was just clarifying, you're not going to get an annual report for another year. You're not going to get a report on this notice of concern till the end of the year. So I don't think it needs to be draconian and punitive on the school. But I do think that, that that record of performance is something that you should consider making. And so I, I don't know, I have a draft motion there, you don't have to do it or not, but it does allow the school to come back with a revised condition compliance. But it does allow the school to come back with a revised condition compliance document. Because right now without it, I'm unclear what they're supposed to be doing. You know, it, all of those items said they were gonna do this by this, they were gonna meet bi-weekly, and they're gonna do that, that's what they should be doing. So I think you could clearly give the school and this new head administrator an opportunity to come forward with whatever they want. And give him the time that he needs. But that's at least my thinking.
Commissioner Creo and Commissioner Ingham.
So.
Oh, you already, did you already speak?
Okay. Um, so first, uh, because I chuckled, it must have been about fifteen, twenty minutes ago. But I chuckled when uh, Mr., when Commissioner Brower said I can hear Ms., I can hear Commissioner Creo saying. Kicking the can, one month, two months, six years. No, what I, what I was thinking right at that moment was. Uh, nobody gets any awards for getting out of bed in the morning. Okay, and no matter how much I like you personally, Joe Dan, and I have one hundred percent confidence in you. We've been through this for so long with this school, doesn't matter who's sitting in your chair, there needs to be accountability. And so, um, you know, when it comes time, and I'm, I'm, I mean, I would like to get through this entire list. And uh, when it comes time to take some sort of an action, I'm absolutely gonna support some sort of. Uh, the next step of a letter of concern on the intervention ladder. Why wouldn't we? Doesn't mean we don't have confidence, but it means that we're holding everything that happened up until this day accountable. And I think that's really important. And I think it's really important for this particular school because before you were even sitting in that chair. Um, it was just a parade of excuses for everything not getting done. And everybody passing the buck to somebody else and no one taking responsibility. And so, um, I mean, that's, that's where I'm gonna come from on this is clear, clear things on the intervention ladder. And you do them or you don't. I have no intention of trying to revoke anything from the school. If anything, I think there needs to be a stronger partnership between the school and Walotoa. And um, so that they're not getting uh, seventh graders that read at a second grade or first grade level. Walotoa High is ninth grade, right? Okay, they're not getting ninth graders that read at a second grade level. And, you know, that's gonna be on you, but um, and the partnership that you create. So I, I'm, I'm not for a, for a pass because the sun rose this morning, okay? Absolutely not. Been down this road for a year.
Okay, Commissioner Ingham.
Okay, being, I have a. Don't, I, okay, here's what I'm gonna say, I want a clarification of what we're proposing. Okay, so it seems to me what I hear is that we, um. Well, first thing I wanna reiterate, what, something that, that um, um, Commissioner. Rebecca, I'm sorry, Bert, um, said is, what do we really, really, really want? And we want those kids to get an education. And so for me, all this fall deraw is really, it, it isn't fall deraw, it's important. But right now, the urgent matter is that we get the most qualified people. Teaching those kids as quickly as possible. And so that is urgent. This is, this list is important. But it isn't the primary urgency, okay? But what I hear people saying is, I think, that we need to, one, truncate this to some degree. We can go through the list, but truncate it, go through it really quickly and just say, at this point. We, this is not done and we're gonna, we're gonna make a notice of concern because it's not done. And then we're gonna say, you look at this list and you tell us, does there, does this make sense? Does this, is there some of these things on this list that are past, history, done, throw them away? And that you have different ideas and I got, to be brutally honest with you, I hope you have some different ideas. Because this is, this has just been, I, I can't say it out loud. Okay, so, so for me, it feels like we, we need to do what we need to do today. Then we need to give you this list and say, look, you got a little time to, to cogitate. And come up with what your real position is on this list. And probably need to speak to your board and talk to them about, because they need to direct this also. This doesn't need to be just you. And then come back to us and say, okay, at our next meeting. This doesn't pertain, I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat this horse anymore, but I do wanna beat this horse. I, I do wanna take this action, this one, I want, I need time to. Uh, assess the community and see what's gonna, what's gonna make sense to, to develop this. And I agree, I don't want to put you under a gun to, to come up with solutions that are half-cooked. Because you just feel like you have to check a box. I want, more than anything, that you be able to focus for the next. Before the next semester starts and being able to. Have personnel at your school that are gonna do a, a good job to the best of their ability with whatever limitations they have. But they have the ability to, to empower them to teach those kids. After that, we can assess this list, you can take, you can knock some of them off and you can say, no, there's different stuff. And what, what Commissioner Bert said, there's a lo, a, a whole load of things that you need to address. I'm, I'm in favor of giving you that time. I hope you don't take it personal that we issue a letter of concern. It's, it needs to happen because they've been unresponsive. After this, please, just. Do your best to get those kids some learning in this last semester of this year. That's all I'm really, my, my heart's desire is that they don't lose this last semester. And that they make some progress. Is, did I, do I have a, a correct assessment of what?
Yeah. So this wa, this was going to be my suggestion. Because I certainly don't, I'm not looking to revoke the school. We are looking, we have to set up some kind of guidelines. But I think, to me, it would be more productive instead of you coming back and saying, here, this is what my suggested. Edits on the condition documents are. And then we're looking at a meeting and saying, oh, I think it should be this. I think it would be more productive if we jointly, like a subcommittee, like. Contract Subcommittee, a Subcommittee of Commissioners sat with the school and with C S D and said, okay. Let's get a clear idea of what our expectations are, what the school feels is reasonable. That can, that can be done by the end of the year. Because once again, we don't have that annual report that we're gonna have, but it's, you need to know what, what we need to know. And we need to know what is fair and reasonable for, you know. To be able to get to us by June. There may be between now and the short time that if we did set this up, there's gonna be. You know, oh, this is done, but look, this came up, you know? So I think it would be beneficial to all of us to sit down at the table again. Because a, a lot of the parties have changed. And so that everyone is clear on, on what's gonna be done. And some things then, the C S D could report, you know, during that time, if it's a, if it's a simple, oh, they fixed their website. You know, that could come out in the director's report. Oh, you know, that's, we're, we're good. And then we set a timeframe when we're gonna look at the, the accomplishment. And said, this all, this needs to be done by, you know, this date. And we're, we're clear on that. And that the letter of concern goes out and it's gonna be cleared out whenever. This is, whatever the agreement is, is cleared out as well. And if we can parse out some of it, simply by a report out by the director, because it was so simple, fine. And I think that's, not that I don't like seeing you, but I don't think it's, you know. You have better use of your time than to, to come here, because now you're missing school. And you've barely started there, you might still need GPS to get there. So, you know, it's, um, so we wanna look at what's, what is fair and reasonable. So that, that was my recommendation, that we, you know, we create that Subcommittee. We get it clear so that we know what, what everyone is expecting. Because I, it's unproductive, keep looking back at this document, and I think there's. I think there's additional things we're thinking about that we wanna see. Commissioner Brower.
Madam Chair, I, I wanna full-throated agree with that. I think that also is a value-based decision from our commission, from our values that we have, especially around respect. There is no grace, I don't think, for our, our values, uh, but I think that this, this is an adaptive leadership model. That we all, at the end of the day, Commissioner Ingham, you're right, we just wanna see students thrive, we wanna see a community thrive. That's inherently part of the school's uh, purpose at Walotoa. And, you know, the, um, meaning the pueblo, the, the pueblo, the, the people there as opposed to the school, just. And I think that this provides an opportunity for new leadership. And the chart, the, the charters, governing council to come together with us to, to kind of figure out a solution together. Because we could continue to do the same thing. And I've heard multiple, multiple of us say, and I, I went unvoiced to say, like, I'm, I don't think we are in any position to want to revoke this school. We want this school to thrive. Uh, we have a very short timeline anyhow with the school's uh, current charter contract with us. And so we wanna see changes, we wanna see changes happen. So I absolutely agree, I think this is a good model for us to think about when we, you know, when we see change not happening. If we have the capabilities to, you know, reconvene and think about. Um, the strength in the, in the new leadership and the potential that we have here at the school. Uh, to come together and adapt and figure out how do we solve the problem as opposed to be right about our. Processes and to be right about the, the, the conditions that we put in place. If they're not working, Commissioner Ingham, I think you just hit it right, like, we gotta make sure at the end of the day, students are thriving. And if, if it's not working now, let's figure it out together as a group. And that continues to make sure we are being um, considerate and value-based. But at the same time, being uh, urgent, Commissioner Creo, and making sure we're not letting this go. But we're, we need to see continued uh, uh, growth.
And I, I think it's sometimes when we say, oh, let the school do this and then come back to the meeting. I think sometimes at the meeting, not intentionally, but it turns out to be a shame on you moment in those conversations. So that the conversation is much better had at a table. You know, and um, getting it set so that in the public forum. There's a professional agreement as to what we're going to do and not this. You know, this isn't the forum to do a negotiations. So um, I think that's the, I, I think that's what we want the commission to be. We want schools to see us as that partner, you know? So that's why, that's why my suggestion is for that Subcommittee um, to meet. And give him a little bit of time to be able to look at all of this and figure out, okay. This is, this is really, this is my critical mass. Commissioner Beck.
As a retired guy and an ex educator, I'd be glad to be part of that Subcommittee.
Thank you, thank you. I think I'm retired, I'm not a hundred percent sure. People keep telling me I'm retired, you know, so. No, I, so I'm gonna say, at this point in time, I don't think we need to look at the rest of this list right now. Because that Subcommittee is gonna be looking at all of that. So it's not, we're not making, I don't believe, we're not making any recommendations as to what should be. Because that's what the Subcommittee's gonna do. So we can. With this, the rest of this to rest right now. And if that's the decision of the commission to agree to that Subcommittee, that's what that's up. We'll be working on a whole new document. Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, I just wanna real briefly say, um, you know, six months ago, I think every one of us was. Thinking, oh man, this school, we're gonna have to close this school, you know? So I just wanna, I publicly wanna thank you for stepping into a really tough situation. And, and really, wi, with open eyes. And, and just the willingness and ability to, to uh, make this better. I think this, this whole group of people now have a hope that, that we're gonna have to take those actions. So I, I love that, so thank you for doing that.
Director Chavez.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Um, I really appreciate that you're coming at this from a values-based perspective and providing clarity on some next steps. That Mr. Lovato and I talked about as a possibility of making. This conditions compliance document, which was created by those that are not at the table at the moment. Um, who made that document, signed that document and sent it to you. So we were taking it literal, but I really, really appreciate what Commissioner Ingham said and what the Commissioners, um. The direction that you all are taking. And just for the record, because I know how frustrating this is, Commissioner Bert, that it seems like there has not been clear communication. I just want to mention that the C S D did meet with the, the folks at the time, half a dozen times, looking at this document. And really, we're lacking some follow-up actions on the part of the school. So I too share in the celebration of the um, new head administrator that's in place. I know that in the short while that Mr. Lovato has been in place, he has been incredibly responsive. And um, working with the Charter Schools Division. So we are here to, to support the school and to support the P E C and making sure that this school has a good plan in place. And that we're tracking what you want us to be tracking.
I'm just going to kind of put you on the spot. In the sense of what's a date that you believe. You could provide a suggested. Can, uh, revision. And then the Subcommittee would meet, but we would have the opportunity to look at that condition, uh, revised. Before we met and then we would then meet and work on that.
Sure, uh. Uh, Chairwoman Gibson and members of the Council, I um, I would like to say tomorrow. But uh, we live in a real world and uh, I would really like for all stakeholders to be a part of this, uh, that includes the board. Uh, and so you, we do have tentatively scheduled a retreat for our board on the first week of February. Um, we, we have tried to establish things and get the will going as quickly as possible. Uh, because we, we understand that uh, what's at risk right now is something that's at the heart of everybody that's sitting here today. Which is doing what's best for kids. Uh, and I agree with, with Commissioner Creo, uh, we can't kick the can, we can't afford that in any school, or our state for that matter. Um, so I, I, I would feel reason, a reasonable timeline would be somewhere around mid-February. Uh, I can't give an exact date, if that's not, uh, if that's not, um. If that's not the ample time you're looking for, I'm just taking into consideration, we have next week, uh, you know, just to look at the calendar and be real. Realistic here, we have next week and then we go on winter break. We're not back until the second week of January. Uh, and then also taking into consideration the calendar that uh, the, the people of the pueblo have within some of their celebrations. Uh, no excuses, uh, I appreciate what everybody said here before, it's something that's on my board in my office, that stayed in my classroom. That says I don't accept excuses, I only accept results. Um, and so I, I, I'm just trying to look at somewhere, I would like to say the end of January. But I think this would be a great point of discussion to bring to our board retreat. Uh, and to really outline, again, with all stakeholders, what we plan on doing. Uh, I would even feel comfortable the week after, I believe, is February, the first, that Saturday, I, I think that's when it is. Um, I don't have. I, uh, I think that's the first, that's when we have our retreat. I, I would hope to have uh, some of this done in that following week if, if possible.
Creo and then Commissioner Beck. Microphone, please.
I'm, I'm not retired. And uh, I think you ought to meet by Zoom next week. I think going into January, February, you know, and I know I'm in the minority here, I mean, it's clear. I'm in the minority relative to wanting there even to be the letter of intervention and the, the notice of concern. Uh, the idea, it's just laughable to me to even think about February. Um, and then, I mean, as well, I would, I, if you wanna, if there's somebody on your board. That wants to be a part of the meeting, I think. that wants to be a part of the meeting, I think that's fine, but to have your board part of the whole thing? No. It's like, you just, you know, the more you create this, the more people you have at the table, you, you end up with a camel, you know, instead of the, isn't there that thing? Camel was done by committee, that whole saying? And something like that. But anyway, I, you know, I'm in the minority here, the commission, and I support whatever the commission's decision is. And with you, and February just to me is, I could, it's crazy to me.
Commissioner Beck and then Commissioner Burt?
Yeah, I'll respectfully disagree with Commissioner Creo. I know it sounds terrible to have to wait for a month and a half or two months. It, 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 it gets me the wrong way, but if it's done, if it's the time that would be the most productive for you. I know between now and February, you're going to make those kids work as hard as you can. You're going to work on those teachers. It's not like you're stopping between now and February 1st. You're going to grind it, I'm sure, if, if I'm reading you right. And your first and first, second, third and fourth priority is to get those kids learning and, and enjoying the classroom. That's not going to stop. And I think there's a reality that this is, there, that's your short term. That's your immediate term. That's your acute. But we want to get rid of the chronic. And, and if it takes you feeling that it takes two months to do that and it'll be done right, then I, I acquiesce to your decisions. You know, you know your school, you know your governing council, you know your situation much better than I do. And if it's February 4th, then I'll be glad to meet with you February 6th because I got to read it in February 5th. So I got to have a day to read it. But, but I'm, I'm of the thought that let's get it done, get it done right and stop the chronic issues that are going on. And you know the acute issues that you got to take on now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Burt and then Ms. Crowe.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much aligned right there with Commissioner Beck. I mean, I, I also, I'll say I would like to volunteer on the subcommittee. And I do think, I actually, I don't think that that's an unfair timeline, even if it wasn't Christmas break, honestly. Because, once again, for, for my perspective, the plan that was developed feels like it was a Band-Aid, right? It was created and with, with a lot of, like, how do we get this done with what we have right now? I do think having a, like, moving from an interim administrator to a permanent administrator, I do think there's systems that need to be put in place that need to blend like this. And that's what makes me think it does need time to really be thought of. Because I don't, I don't even know if Jo Dan, if you've thought of like this conditions document in any other way other than I have to just do this conditions document. I have to do these things. That's it. I have to make it work. So asking the administrator and the governing board to really think of this in a different way, like, what is best for the school long-term? Not short-term Band-Aid just to get rid of the condition, but long-term? What is the systems we want to develop? What are the things we want in place to help support those items that are on our condition list, you know? I don't think it was thought of that way when it was originally created. I do think that's what the school needs now, is to really be thinking longer term. Because I do, I, I mean, I think a lot of the decisions that were made were Band-Aid fixes. And I don't think you're in a space where you need to be doing Band-Aid fixes anymore. Because it's just going to lead to more, like, the issues never go away. So I do think, I think that's, I, I would expect, I mean, I will tell you this, withholding until February 5th, you know, after your retreat, you guys go through this, you come up, you develop the plan, what does the school look like in the next two years before the, the charter turns over? What does it look like 10 years from now? What does it look like 20 years from now? You know, I know that needs to get developed and thought of. However, I'm going to expect, like, by, and all, by supporting, giving the time, I'm going to expect a really good plan. Like, I, like, that's the one thing that I'm, like, I'm going to give the autonomy, like, okay, yeah, go take the time, figure it out, take a look at it, but it better be really good when it comes up, you know? That's kind of the, the, that's the charter promise, right? Do it how you want, but it better be, the results that we get at the end of it better be really good. So I do think this is, this makes me feel a lot better for the school. I felt like we were just spinning wheels, doing nothing. And there are so many people who are involved, who, you know, really came in at a time to try to help and really try to collaborate, but it, it really did feel chaotic. It felt like a lot of chaos, a lot of confusion, a lot of stress for all the people involved. And so many people really wanting to help. Once again, I, I just feel like there is a lack of central leadership to really help tie all those pieces together. You know, you have people from Walotoa stepping in to come help and, and doing the best they can. Like, I, I oftentimes will talk about situations like this of like, when there's not like a, a captain of a ship, like, really telling people what to do, driving the ship, like, really focusing everyone. Generally, what good leaders do is they hop off in their own little life rafts and they start rowing their own little teams to safety as best they can, right? And I feel like that's kind of what happened in this school as well. Like, everyone kind of got in their light, like, okay, yeah, like, I can take care of my little part and I'm going to do it the best I can. And ever, I'm going to give everything to my little part. And everybody has been, is trying to do that. That doesn't work. Like, that's not a good strategy. It's not, that's not how things really progress in a, in a systematic way. So I do support issuing a letter of concern today. And I actually think that really does open up the options of, okay, how can we do this over the course of this next, the rest of this year and into the next, you know, into the next school year, where we're actually providing meaningful oversight to the school? And get a chance to restart the organization process from CSD to the school as well, to where CSD can help, like, really keep track of this information better as well, to be, to where we're provided the information in a better and more clear way. Because I also think that's been a really big deficit that's happened in the last year as well. So I do think this is an opportunity to kind of course correct a lot of the things that have happened. But I, I, like, like I said, I do think my expectation for February would be really high. But I do like the idea that you're involving the board in it. No one can say they don't know what happened. No one can say they don't understand what's happening. No one could, you know, if everyone's on the same page, I think that's what's going to help lead to more meaningful change. Because right now, the data that I, every set of data I've been given on this school has been confusing and almost nonsensical. So I'm looking forward to actually getting some good data that can show progress that's meaningful.
Thank you, Chair Gibson and commissioners. Two things. One is we are taking, the CSD, we are taking a closer look at our process for monitoring conditions.
It's just a joke, Gary.
Yeah, like, we're, we're like, oh, my God.
Okay, thank you. It's Cheryl Rowe from Charter Schools Division. Two things I wanted to say. One is CSD is currently looking at how we're monitoring conditions and revamping our process for that. We have a meeting about it early next week, actually, because we do realize that this needs to be more clear and managed better. So that's one thing that we have underway and that we're really, we really want to get, get that down. Another thing is we would be very interested in being part of that subcommittee. So if one or two of us from the CSD authorizing team could join you, that would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Ingham?
I, I like where we're going, but I mean, for a different reason, I think. I recognize, I'm not volunteering to be on that committee because my life is too crazy right now. And so there's limitations to everybody's, the calories they can expend. And you have a life too. And so my, my, but, but my feeling is, what I would really want you to focus on is, right now, you got, what, one week left with your kids? Establishing a relationship with your kids. Do you have a time? I realize that you're, it's Christmas and it's your, your opportunity to be with your family, but I would expect that you would be really thoughtfully considering how you can best spend that, how you can use that time to, to figure out what your strategic, your strategic plan is to, to engage with the teachers and the kids in that first week of school at the beginning of the semester. And so I think it's a great idea that you could get that semester started and then do your retreat and be able to be very thoughtful about it, preparing for that and for, and for. I, I just, I think it is a, a bad idea to force you into dealing with a bunch of stuff with this when what I see as your most important thing is the relationship you're going to have with that school, the teachers and the kids. And that, that, your time for this two weeks of vacation, you, you, I mean, God bless you for, for taking this on and, and for doing, I hope you will take that time and be very deliberate about that and get your, straighten that part out. And once the semester is started, then, yeah, it's still rigorous, it's still going to be rough, but at least you'll have that beginning thing started the semester over with before you have to wrestle with this whole mess. So that's the way it looks to me. So I'm very thankful for this and I feel like it's a really good plan.
And I'm just going to say, I think the February 5 deadline is more than reasonable. I think it's critically important that the board be involved in this and that the board be involved with us, the group in the subcommittee, because the contract is with the board and us. And it should be the board making sure that there's updates from the head administrator on that compliance document. Where are you with this? And it is, that's critically important. So we can't leave that. He's going to be responsible for the day-to-day to make sure that we're working on this. But the board has to be that partner. This is a partnership that we have. And the partnership is more with the board and us than it is with the head administrator and us. It's his partnership with the board. So we all have to work jointly. So are we ready for the motion?
No, I want to, I just, I'm, I wrote these notes down. There's a couple, I'm happy to go on this route. Everyone knows my concern with timelines and things like that. Because February becomes March, the February, our meeting in February is 2021, then we have March. We also have two weeks. We have so many contracts in February and March. We have two full weeks of contracts. And I'm just reminded, and I, I jotted this down when, when Commissioner Ingham said, something in the tune of another semester lost. And then Ms. Becca, this is their only third grade. Now, I know, I know, for that, but this, the, and in terms of like the urgency and the fire, because I remember earlier on, Ms. Burt saying, I look at a school that we, like, two days ago, I think, is when they were here, and we did say the house is on fire for that school because of the way they pretty much even breached their con, we contracted. We were taking incredibly emergent action. So, I mean, I hope that what comes out of the subcommittee, that it, that it recognizes this is the emergency that it is.
I move that the PEC send the school a notice of concern regarding the failure of the school to meet all of the requirements from the July to December, requirements from July to December as set forth in the condition compliance document. This notice of concern, we made part of the record of performance of the school. The school must, one, by February 5th, 2025, provide, excuse me, provide a subcommittee of the PEC of proposed revisions to the condition compliance document so that the school and the PEC subcommittee can jointly develop a revised condition compliance document for approval by both boards. Two, then ensure that the actions in the revised condition compliance document are completed. And three, that information is provided to CSD in a manner that is sufficient for CSD review. And the subcommittee so far is Commissioners Burt, Beck, Gibson. Is there anyone else? Well, yeah, commissioners, anyone else want to be on it? Don't speak too loudly. Charter School staff and Ms. Bourne? I need a second.
Second.
Right. Second.
I have, I have a question after your motion.
Okay. There's a motion by?
She seconded. Commissioner Burt?
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a, and a second by Commissioner Burt.
I have a question on the timeline. I thought you're, you're, you're.
No, you can't ask him. The motion's been made.
I believe that the meeting is February 5th, so.
Oh, it's the weekend of the 1st.
Okay. So, so February 5th will give them enough time? Okay.
They're working on it that weekend, you know?
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Creo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, there are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thanks. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. She's not on. So the head admin didn't need to be here for item 10C. It's just a notification to us. We sent the letter out of concern that the assurance document had not been submitted, but the assurance document was submitted. And you see the date there of December 2nd? So that's, there's no ongoing concern about that. So we didn't need a discussion with him about that. We are on to item number 11.
Can I, can I just add to that? You can. You can do a notice of concern and immediately show that it was corrected. That's what you have been doing.
Right.
So I don't know if you want to do that or not. That's how the motions are drafted. That.
You want us to clear the concern out?
No, you didn't actually issue a, I'll have to see. Did you issue a notice of, you didn't issue a notice of concern?
No. I don't believe the letter said that. I think it still said that there's any concern.
Yeah, so you, you can, if you want to, issue a notice of concern and in the same letter deem it. That is fine.
Oh, good, I know. I'm fine with just, they, they did it. You know, they, we sent them a letter, they did it. We got bigger. Item number 11, discussion of possible action under the intervention ladder, including the, the non-submital, late submittal of the assurance form. So Dream Denai was one of three schools that had not submitted the assurance forms. SOTA has since submitted the assurance form. We just said San Diego Riverside has, Dream Denai has not submitted that form. To my knowledge, they have, you know.
Chair Gibson? Chair Gibson, I asked Missy Brown to check on the submittal. You also have access to EpiCenter where it may have been submitted in the past couple of days. When this agenda was published, it had not.
Correct. And forgive me, but with all the renewals, I have not checked EpiCenter in the last couple of days. I've been reading renewal applications.
I, I checked EpiCenter yesterday at the end of our, of our last school and I reached out to the head administrator and the head, well, one of the remaining board members with the form and asked. I just checked EpiCenter and it's not in there at this time.
So I'm going to. So. Yeah, I thought they did. So how many board members are there?
There are two board members that we know of right now. She is.
Is my understanding from her, yeah. Oh, good, Nadine, you have your hand up. Because my understanding is you were onboarding, I think the last time I spoke with you, three, so that maybe you have five and not two. Anyway, if you could clarify that.
Right.
Commission.
Um, everyone, I'm Nadine Chado, the head administrator at Dream Dine Charter School. Currently, we have three board members. We had previously lost four members within the past two months. And now we have, we're, we're going to be bringing on another board member on Monday. The assurances, I apologize, did not get sent in because, you know, we were just going through some turmoil there, but it has been presented to this current board and we're meeting on Monday to discuss it again and to submit it by the end of the day on Monday. So that is the plan at this time.
So let me just get a clarification. With the onboarding of one new member, you're still only going to have four board members?
Yes, and the fifth board member, we're trying to recruit a parent. So we had a couple of parents during our PAC committee that had, that did show some interest, but they were a little hesitant. So we're kind of hoping that maybe they would step up at the next meeting. So yeah, we're, we're, we're working hard on that. We had some issues with it for the past couple of months, but now that the four board members are not, no longer with us, we're just trying to reestablish a five-membership board.
Do, do, so I just want to make sure that you understand there's somewhat of an urgency because you no longer qualify as a Board of Finance with only four board members.
Right, right. And we're, we're, we're working on that. We've, I've addressed to the board members how important this is and hopefully we'll get that parent on by Monday. So we will have five board members after the meeting on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. So, and Commissioners, in your information, there's, so Nadine, there's a little bit of a concern about enrollment at the school because my understanding is your current enrollment is somewhere around 15?
17.
Okay, it's at 17. It's still a significantly low number. School budget provided some information to us that with 20 enrollment, you would be at a loss of about $200,000 from this current school year, which is a significant loss of money. And that's with 20 as an enrollment. So there is a, you know, there's a concern about the school being able to provide the programming to the community that it's established in with that significant a loss of funds. So I'm hoping that there's a recruitment plan that's, and you're reaching out for maybe some help in the community and to community partners to help you with recruitment because I, you know, I, I want this school to continue, but it's such a low student count. It's hard to keep the lights on with that, let alone programming with that big a loss of money.
Right, and I do agree with that. We are in a recruiting effort currently. We have, I mean, we're going to be doing as much as we can until school dismisses on the 20th. And we have reached out to partners that work with us in, in the past and we are trying to get some more input from the community. We've reached out to chapter houses, we've reached out to local communities and then, you know, through word of mouth, the whole school. As a matter of fact, we have some, some things coming up today. That's the reason why, I apologize, I'm not there in person. I'd rather be here trying to recruit for the school. That's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks, and I appreciate that. You know, and understanding the fact that it's very difficult to get families to make a switch in the middle of the year. It really, you know, unless you really, really, really are dissatisfied with where your kiddos are, to, you know, make that change in the middle of the year is very difficult. And that's what I, you know, I get some angst about because your budget's going to have to be based on what you have and that's going to be really difficult because you don't want to over project. Also, because that puts you in another financial crisis. So I, I, thanks for the ongoing efforts. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
But I know it's hard. Sure.
I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this. The assurance document, when was that due? Ms. Chado, this is, this is Commissioner Brower. And I totally, I totally get things change, especially with the governing council changes. Sounds like this thing could have been done before. A lot of those changes happened and so I do think, I do have a little bit of like concern that we didn't get that done when we could have. And I'm not sure why it wasn't done earlier. I don't know if you can shed some light on that. I, I just, I don't, I don't need excuses, but I'm just curious if there was any, any reason why it couldn't have been done when you had a full, a full board.
And this is just the insurance that you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, it was.
It's pretty straightforward. It's a pretty straightforward document.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And I apologize, I did not get that submitted immediately. And there, I'm not trying to make excuses either, but a lot of things did happen during those board meetings and we didn't get to those issues or we didn't get to those specific items. So yeah, we're, you know, being, being a state charter does require a lot more and I do understand that and this will not happen, at least not under my administration from here on. And I do appreciate you reaching out and, and asking about that. It does keep us in line and on, on track of what we need to be doing. Thank you.
So, and I appreciate what you said, but, you know, our reaching out now to remind you, we've reached out before to remind. So this is, you know, this is something that is, to me, critically important in that relationship between, and this isn't really on you. It was, this was the board that was supposed to do it. I know you help populate the agenda and there's a lot of work and you're there to remind, but this was the, you know, for the board to, we're not, we didn't get to that this month, when this is, this is the board's assurance to us. It, it is concerning.
Hi, Nadine, it's Commissioner Carrillo. Hope you're all doing well. While, I mean, I understand the concerns that you've had, truly. I mean, I am going to support a notice of concern on the intervention ladder because this has gone on way too long. And my recollection, having attended as just an audience at your last board meeting, is that the assurance form wasn't even on the agenda. This could have been done. It's like, but it wasn't even on the agenda. So for me, and this doesn't fall on you necessarily, it's, you know, it falls on the board. It's like, they knew this is a priority and they didn't even put it on the darn agenda. Not to mention the OMA violation of everyone just scooting off and pretty much not saying why to go into exec, that's another issue. So, I mean, the assurance form, I mean, I know you're under the gun with getting the fourth, you have the fourth member now that's committed, you're hopefully going to have that fifth on Monday. But my impression is this just hasn't been a priority, but at least that's the way it looks at, like from our end.
Yes, and I agree, Commissioner Carrillo, I do agree that it's not really a priority and I'm probably speaking out of term, but when you're not following your bylaws and you're not, you know, in compliance with state requirements, it, this is what happens. And I've been told several times to stay in my corner that this is not my concern. So, I mean, this is, this is reality and this is the way it's been. So now that we have new board members, we're establishing new relationships, things will probably become a little bit easier to, you know, move forward. Thank you.
And you know what? That's really fine if they say, this isn't your concern, it's our concern, that's fine. Because the letter goes to the board saying that they're not, they're not in, we have a, we have a concern because you're not in compliance. So, and it's on the board and, you know, they can seek legal advice if they wish.
Commissioner Brown? I just have a quick question. This is, this is aligned to like the, the budget document that we received, the updated. Is it okay if I ask a specific question about a specific grant that they might have? Is it okay? I just want to make sure it's on, in alignment. Ms. Chado, do you, are you all still in Indigenous Education Initiative?
Yes, we are.
And how much, how much, how much are you expecting for this? What is the, what is the amount this year that you receive for that?
$200,000.
Okay. So that's a substantial grant that you receive?
Yes, it is.
So that, that helps me see like, and is that for next year as well or is this your last year?
I believe this is our last year.
Got it. Okay. Okay, that's helpful. That makes me think about like any potential falling back of SCG or, I don't know if they use that language anymore, if they take it back or the next, the next funds that are going to be released, it's going to be readjusted, but that, that won't be readjusted, but it's, you know, it's not carryover for sure. It's not going to be carrying over, so it's not going to help, but at least it's going to support. That's a large, that's a larger grant than, than, you know, for the size of the school for sure, to do Indigenous education work. It's hard for, it's sad that it's not more students who are going to be impacted by that grant, but in terms of the budget itself, it, that gives me less pause in thinking about an SCG readjustment that might be happening and then we might, having, might be having a different conversation about this year, being able to keep the lights on.
Yeah, well, Budget Bureau actually indicated that for this year, because they had a substantial carryover, that this year isn't the, there is no concern, but there is a concern for next year.
Next year, okay.
So that, you know, there are, there's, they're fine. So even if there is a readjustment, they're going to, they'll be fine this year, but for next year, because of, if they even drop to 20, there would be that $200,000 loss, you know? So if they keep less than that, it's going to, you know, every student, so that, that's the, that's the concern. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carrillo?
I have a question. This is for Commissioner Brower. I want to understand this. So the $200,000 grant, does that expire at the end of this school year?
Yep.
Okay. Is that grant used specifically for Indigenous education, so language and culture, or is it at the discretion of the board?
It's a specific grant that's given out by the Indian Education Department, Division that's separate from the traditional Indian education funding that all tribes, pueblos, nations and, and schools are eligible for if they have a, if they're Indian impacted, if that's the right word, school district. This is a special like competitive grant that some, some schools, charters or districts received to reimagine their educational model through an Indigenous-centered, locally-based kind of approach. So it's, there's a grant that Ms. Chado and her team are implementing that's overseed by, overseen by the Indian Education Division.
So then am I correct that it would kind of stand to reason that unless they get a whole heap more full of kids, that $200,000 is just going to be what does them in, the loss of that money?
That's already, that's, that's guaranteed.
The end of this, through the end of this year.
Yeah, this is their third year probably of that grant.
Yeah, but I mean, so now in fall of 2025, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but maybe we're looking at a school that now has to go from 18 kids to 28 kids. How on earth is that going to happen? So it's just, because I actually, I remember also hearing in the board meeting that I sat in on, Ms. Chado, the kind of the plans, the recruitment plans. And, I mean, we have a, a new school, we have three new schools opening in fall that are doing a lot of recruiting and recruiting even in the best of circumstances in these communities, it's Santa Fe, Albuquerque and Almagordo, is very difficult. And when I was listening to what, I guess it was the committee, I can't remember what it was called, around recruiting was, you know, saying what their plans were, I was, I felt very, honestly, Nadine, I felt very discouraged about your being able to reach the kind of number you think you need to reach. So it's just, it's a big concern of mine because obviously this commission had great hope, it has great hope in Dream Dine to achieve their mission, you know, in combining culture, language and also academics. So that's where we are right now. And I can do a motion.
Sure. I think we're ready. Yep.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion then. I move that the PEC send the school, usually it's spelled out there, okay. This is.
That the PEC.
No, I know, I can read that part, but I see things. Okay. Is the, is the assurance form, okay, I see, I see that. Okay. I'm good, Julia? Okay. My move that the PEC send Dream Dine Charter School a notice of concern regarding the failure of the governing board to submit the required assurance documentation. This notice of concern will be made part of the record of performance of the school. The board is required to review the school's contract and performance framework obligations as set forth in the assurance form and then submit this documentation within 10 business days into the epicenter database for the school. Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Carrillo and a second by Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Attorney Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four, zero votes against, the motion passes.
Thanks.
Nadine, thank you very much, and I understand the challenges that you're facing and I just very grateful for your service to your school and the kids.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to chime off now. Thank you.
We are on to item number 12, which is discussion of possible action to require that all schools have specific provisions in their bylaws such as regarding how emergency action will be taken if the board falls below the number needed for quorum. And this is, I think we have a second example today of a school that lost board members and most, we know one absolutely did, today most likely fell below their quorum number. And there's a concern over how a school follows a process of doing, of doing that. Because as we had the discussion before, you know, it becomes somewhat worry when a head administrator is being sort of charged with going and finding new board members. You know, I, I fully get why it happens, but it's still, you know, if there's at, at least a process in their bylaws that takes that burden away, so I mean, guaranteed it's not going to happen. But at least if there's a process in there, hopefully those remaining board members will follow the process that's in their bylaws. And that's all we're, that's all we're asking so that the school doesn't fall, doesn't have a lengthy period of time that they don't have quorum. Because if you don't have quorum, they can't make certain decisions. Plain and simple. Plain and simple. Ms., Commissioner Ingham, did you want to say something?
Like, I want to ask what that looks like.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I can imagine when you fall below quorum, then you can't make a decision also. And so that, is this saying that if you fall behind, below quorum, that you can only make one decision, and that's to agree to another board member? Is that basically what we're saying? Um, which, like, makes sense, but what happens when you get to one? I, I'm just asking, is it that, that seems to be a real, real problem, and that's what we had with Dream D N A, right? Was they went down to one?
Six directions. They went down to... Six directions. Dream D N A went down to...
Well, I'm...
Well, I don't know. I think they went down to at least two.
Commissioner, what I, what, what I think is clear is that you all do not have the ability to appoint new board members. P E D arguably could have it and doesn't take action, and therefore the bylaws need to indicate a process that they will use to get back up to quorum. So it, it's going to be down to the charter school to take that action. The reason Six Direction was kind of thrown into turmoil was they didn't have that provision. They then, over that weekend, fashioned a solution that they, but it should be fashioned within the bylaws, because it's a charter school issue. It's not a P E C issue, not a P E D issue, so their bylaws need to say what they're going to do. They don't have to look identical to each other. The, different schools could handle it a different way, but they need to have some reasonable way to deal with that.
If I might? Um, so Chair Gibson and Commissioners, um, I am in the process right now of doing an inventory of all of our charter schools and their bylaws, um, to ensure that our schools are in compliance with this. I'm starting with the renewal cohort and the new, um, I Y schools, and then we'll move on to the rest of, of your charter schools to check on that, um, and then I'll reach out to them with, um, guidance on that request to update their, their bylaws. Um, I would like to ask the commission, though, so as of now, schools are allowed to request an extension, so they have forty-five days to replace a board member, and they are allowed to request an extension for another thirty days, making it total of seventy-five days. I had, previous guidance has been if a school requests the extension, Charter Schools Division gives them the extension. Does the commission want that to continue to be the case, or is, if a school has a five-member board, are they not qualified for that extension?
Missy, that's item seventeen.
Okay, sorry.
No worries.
Yeah, so that's with, because that exact thing came up, we put that on the agenda.
So, so can I ask then, um, aren't there statutory limitations as to, um, with, with board governance? Um, they, they only have a couple of options, or I, I can't think of any other option they can have, but to make that one, um, one decision to engage another board member. I, I don't, I don't know what else, what other options they would have. It, it seems very straightforward to me that they, that puts them in a really difficult position. So you're saying that the secretary could appoint somebody, but they, they choose not to? But they could do something like that, right? They could avoid, uh, impose a temporary board member in order to get the thing back on track?
You think they can, but they think they can't, so they, what was clear from Six Directions is there needs to be a practical solution. You don't have the authority. P E D arguably has the authority and doesn't do it, so then it falls back to that community. That makes some sense to me. You're in a practical problem, and you have a community that can tender the resignation of the, of the school charter, or they can fashion a solution within that school community to, to appoint new board members. I mean, the, you heard, um, Attorney Ivy Soto say that he thought that, you know, his position is that that's equivalent to a new school that doesn't have a board, and there's no one to convene anything, and they create a board. So he fashioned, and that school fashioned, a community solution that allowed that school to have five board members. And then they came in front of you and provided the five board members, you accepted the five board members, and accepted the Board of Finance and moved on. I think there's numerous ways a school community could identify that. You could have an open meeting of all the parents, you could, whatever it is that you want to do. But what I think is clear is you can't do it, and P E C, P E D isn't going to do it, so the school should address it in their bylaws.
Okay. Thank you.
The rule right, the rule right now allows the Cabinet Secretary to remove a school board and then appoint, but not individual school, even for a local school district, the Cabinet Secretary can't appoint an individual. They were looking at cleaning up that role and giving the Cabinet Secretary the ability to remove and appoint. But right now, the Cabinet Secretary can remove the board, suspend, it's not a removal, it's a suspension. And their position is they don't have that statutory authority for charters.
At, at this point?
At this point.
But it would seem that there are, like, emergency measures that, 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 um, it would seem reasonable that it is an emergency when a board falls below quorum. And so we, we wouldn't necessarily have to affect the whole idea of replacing a board or not, it's just to get a person in there to make a quorum so they can make a decision. And so it wouldn't seem like such a, a huge thing to appoint an interim board member one, just to get past that. Anyway, that's...
Yeah, you know, I'm, and it's, it's my challenge, and it's, you know, whatever, but when a new applicant does it, they don't have a contract with us at that point, so they're not obligated to do, you know, they're not answerable to us. If, to me, it becomes different when they're obligated, they've taken an O M A oath already as a board, they have a contract with us. So I, I, you know, I see a real distinction between that. We don't have any control over how a new applicant creates their board, because they're, they're, you know, until they sign that contract, they're not obligated really to us. So, um, you know, I disagree to some extent of allowing the recreation when you fall below, but I get it that there's, you know, it is what it is, but I think there has to be guidelines set, so that there's, not guidelines, the individual schools have to, have to have in their bylaws what they may do if this happens, so that it's not just always a, oh, now what are we going to do, and it gets messy. They should be, they should be able to have something to fall back on to say, how do we do this? Plain and simple. And it should be up to each individual's community to try to figure that out.
I'm sorry, I just, I, I feel like this is a, a relatively easy fix for, for the secretary to, to, to deal with that, and just as an emergency position to have the secretary have that ability, and for them to, you know, be absolutely agreed that they will use that ability in an emergency. And that's, that's all I think, because I think it really gets so gray when you, like you said, when you, when your board falls below quorum, it's a really gray matter on how, and I don't think there's a lot of opt, I, I know, Julia, you're saying there's a lot of options, but I guess I don't see that. I, I don't see the, um, the ability for a community to, like, what Patty just, or, or Commissioner Gibson just said, how they can just take a board that has a contract, and then the community come up with a new person or new people to have that contract that already exists. That seems very awkward to me, and it seems the most straightforward thing is to petition the secretary to put that, you don't like that idea? Okay, well, I, I... I, I feel like the onus needs to be on the community, I like that. You write in the bylaws, make it simple, you know, you're, you're in a, you, you, you know, I, I think, I think it needs to be community. Can you imagine that the secretary having to appoint a board member for a charter school? The process that it would take, and the time that it would take for that to occur? I can't, I can't even imagine that. I think, I think it would be a very limited emergency situation where you have a person that could go in and just have, I know that it means that they have to be a board member, but it's specifically for one, one requirement, and that is to approve another board member, and get, get to the point where you have a quorum. And that, that's, that's all that person would be required to do.
You can't make them vote.
No, I, I, I think what you're, I think what you're trying to do is have a process that gets a sufficient number of board members there. Once they're there, they can take any action they want, and then they have to get up to fi, they have to do whatever they need to do, but it's just the process to, um, appoint that board member, then that is, person is a board member, and they can do whatever they need to do. So, um, I, I think it's a practical problem, and I frankly think that, that a court would say, find a practical solution to this. If C S D doesn't have the ability, P E D is or isn't taking that, it's a school issue, because jobs are at stake, kids are at stake, parents are at stake, you know, so, um, you know, and frankly, there were a lot of lawyers here that day for, uh, happened to be in the audience with Six Directions, and they all were like, no, this should, this should just be an issue in...
When you add new board members to Governing Council, you have a quorum, but you want to add more members, the, the Governing Council votes on those members.
They have a quorum and they take action like anything else. This is just when you fall into...
Right, no, I under, no, I understand that, but the, I, I think that, that, yeah, that, that's a process that can be easily figured out, I think, within bylaws.
All I'm saying is there's, I think there's a couple of ways you could set it up, and it's community that should set it up.
Commissioner Burt?
Thanks, um, I have two things to say, um, I actually, I, I agree with it, like what Commissioner Taylor was saying, like, let them figure it out. I, I like the idea of letting the schools figure it out, put it in their bylaws. I do think it's a problem that's come up enough to where we should just ask them to have a plan in place, whatever that looks like. I respect charter autonomy, they can do however they want, I don't, I, that's not my problem. Um, but I do have two things in regards to making a motion today. One, I think this is something that we should have on the agenda next month for the vote. I think today should be the first time we talk about it. This is, I mean, I think we need to give the public time to, if they have, if, if, this is one of those things that, if they get wind of it and we just voted on it today, um, I don't feel like that's appropriate. So I would request that we do the, this as a, like a first reading, and then vote, do a vote next month, um, just as far as like giving that notice to the public. And then secondly, I'm not going to support doing something within sixty days, I will support it by, that it needs to be done at the beginning of the next fiscal year, because I do not want to spring things on the middle of schools, in the middle of the school year, and tell them to get stuff done. I don't not, I do not think this is that level of an emergency that we need to be telling schools to do it in the middle of their school year. So I would say that they need to do it by the end of the fiscal year, and that this, this apply, that this needs to be done, starting July one, is when the C S D audit should start, um, for them to, to get it done, kind of thing. So that's, that, those are the two things, I think. It's mostly just like process and, and being fair to governing boards in schools.
I mean, I wholeheartedly agree that, uh, this, they need to be looking at this, figuring it out, and it's in epicenter at the start for the new school year. That's, you know, that it's, it's, I don't, I don't want just, oh, we have to do this, so now here we go, and now it's in the bylaws, and when they, if they had to use it, they can't, it's like, who thought of that, you know? And it's, it's not usable. So I think they need some time to think about it. I would think they'd need some time to maybe even seek their own legal counsel if they wanted to, to give them some advisement, or maybe it's something PCS and M wants to take a look at, and...
They could, like, a model.
Here's some, here's some thoughts, yeah.
Yeah.
And here's some, you know, uh, here's some ideas, and this is what you might look at. Um, so, uh, I, I think they, they need the time, and I'm, uh, the, the practice that we've tried to put in place is talking about it and then voting at the next meeting, so... Yeah. And I think it gives, um, yeah, because PCS and M probably won't, I'm guessing, might not have a Tuesday call this next Tuesday, but they would in, in January, so it would give them time to, um, have some thoughts about it. So, I, so I think we're good with this at, at this point in time. And I, I will say, I agree that it has to come from the, like we said, from the school, Cabinet Secretary, you know, the, the, the school itself could put in a, a plan that we're going to onboard these people temporarily, so that we can get this vote in, and then, you know, we'll get people on. It's, it's up to them, but an interloper doesn't always work, you know? So, thanks. We are on to item number thirteen, which is discussion and possible action to approve the P E C budget, um, and I'm removing the I G A amendment, because we don't have that. And I don't think we need the I G A amendment to approve the budget, because the budget includes that, that money. So in your folder is the, um, and I, and I'm also thinking, um, we had a, a report back last month that there was a concern about what the total amount was, and the total amount that's being reflected in, in the budget that you see is the five point two million, that the four point seven was originally re, reported out as a possible over-projection. Um, we got a, I thought you put it in the folder. Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I did not know that. It's in the finance subcommittee. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I apologize. Who's on first? So anyway, as, that's being done. Um, we received, the Budget Subcommittee met two, three weeks ago, and we did receive from, you know, the school, uh, from Budget, that the student count is nineteen thousand four hundred. I just find it very interesting that it comes to exactly a round number, but, you know, that's just me. Um, but e, even if, so even if you, if you, so we accept that as the number. The dollar amount is five point two million. And when we met with the Deputy Secretary and the Assistant Secretary yesterday, we indicated that the budget is five point two, and there was no disagreement with that. So, um, what is in there is the five point two, and the money that is being expended through the special projects fits outside of that, in terms of the, the monies that are in there that are exactly being spent. This is the money that is that, hate to say, overage. Right, so I'm going to ask Commissioners, you know, we want to vote today on this?
And I, I don't see any documents.
It's in there. It just, Commissioner Burt, that's my fault. I thought it went in, it did not, but it just went in.
So I don't know...
And that's my... And that's my fault. I, I just haven't, I didn't double check that it was in there, I just, I thought it was, so that's on me.
I think unless there's an urgent reason to have to vote today, because of that, maybe yeah, we wait.
Yeah, I agree.
For appropriateness, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and because people didn't actually get eyes on it until 30 seconds ago.
Exactly, exactly.
So we'll, we'll, so now you can digest it, and that, you know, when you need to fall asleep, you can open this up, and, I'm sorry. The CSD staff has to take defensive driving, so that's funded. Well, because it's CSD, it's, it's, it's a CSD cost. We fund CSD. Sure.
Am I reading this right, that we have 5.2 million and the budget's 3 million? Is that right?
I haven't looked at it. I, I think that's what.
I, I don't think this budget sheet's updated correctly, based off of the conversations we've been having, like the one uploaded as item 13. I don't think it reflects, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking Director Chavez may have a different option that's, because we've done a lot of talking, this looks old to me.
Okay, because that's, because I asked if that was the latest, and that was my understanding. So if we've got a newer one, if that could just go in the folder for next month, that would be great, okay? And then we can, okay.
For next month, we can have an updated budget, yes. I, I wasn't sure what you were planning to present, so did not prepare something for this.
I didn't need you to prepare anything, no. No, we're good, we're good. Okay, so we will move this to next month, thanks. I got that, yeah, yeah. So I, so you will see in your folder, there is, for item number 14, discussion of possible action on the status of the rollout and budget of items approved, and A is the PEC logo. So there is the, there are two in there. The one is the one that we looked at last month, and the other one is, we had asked for some changes, and they sent the logo that still had the wheat on it. So I asked Consuelo to have the wheat removed, because that's what commissioners had asked for, so that... Yes? And wait a minute, before we do this, Missy, can you, can someone get, thanks, thanks.
So are you sure this is our logo? Because this looks like it's the logo for the library commission.
This is what commissioners asked to be removed out of that logo that we were looking at, and.
Like everything to be removed except a book?
Correct. That's, yes.
I don't recall that.
And we asked for the book pages to be open.
Me as an ex.
Well, this is what came out of the, the discussion that commissioners had. They wanted the Adobe Structure out, they wanted the graduation cap out, the blue waves. So that's, so that's what ends up being left, is that. And commissioners asked for it to be a book that had the pages open. So that's exactly representative, and the wheat to be removed. So that's, the one on the right is exactly what commissioners asked for. So, you know, is it, you know, and it, from my recollection, people said, you know, the less, the better, the simpler, the better. Well, you can't get a whole lot simpler, you know? So this is, this is really the exact representation of what commissioners asked for. Commissioner Burt?
Yeah, I agree, I think this is exactly what we talked, like, to the T, exactly what we discussed last month. I'm, I'm totally open, I like seeing, I, and, um, I don't know who put them in the little tiny icons too, but I'm so grateful, because that's what is going to, it's going to look that tiny on our business cards and things like that, so I'm grateful to see it in that way, which, so I, in all honesty, I'll, I'll happily, I like both. I'm, I, like, I like it with the wheat, I like it without, I could go either way, so whatever the majority wants, I'm, I'm happily going to just follow along with this one. But I actually, I think it's, it's good, it's simple, it's exactly what we asked for with the thinner turquoises, like, I think they, I think the note-taking and the, the translation about what we asked last month, Consuelo getting all that information and translating it to this person, this person doing it, it's exactly what we asked for. So I'm, I'm very happy with either.
Commissioner Brower?
I mean, I, I would like to see some, some ears of corn in there where the wheat was, but I'm going to, I'm going to hold my tongue after that, I'm just wanting to bet on the record. Uh, I think it looks great, I think simpler, better, because, you know, I don't know, for me, I just think about, this is going to be mostly on black and white, almost 99.9% of the time. And I think as long as the white, the, as long, sorry, as long as the yellow, red, and blue looks right, and black and white, that's my only question, if that, that looks good that way, uh, then I'm, I'm really good at it. If it's in like the gray space or whatever you call it, the gray scaling, looks good. But I, I like that, it's, I like the open book, I like the simplicity, I think it's going to look really nice on some information that we send out.
And it looks, um, yeah, when it gets down into that smaller image, you can still see it. If you put more in it, you're, and it, and it's that little tiny, it just, you're not going to understand what it is. So, um, are we team wheat or team non-wheat?
I think in honor of Commissioner Brower, I would vote for the wheat, just because of all the agriculture, yeah, because of all the agriculture he does, and we want to respect that.
Commissioner Burt, doesn't matter to me. I, I can go, I can go with the wheat, it's not, you know, it's fine. Yeah, yeah, it kind of fills up a little bit of dead space, I think people call it white space, but. Consuelo?
I just have one suggestion, I thought, um, when I sent you the original one, I thought that they should drop the wheat, so it's a little more centered between the New Mexico and the Public Education Commission.
Yeah, but I can, yeah, and I fully understand that and appreciate that thought, but, you know, I think the wheat does kind of stick to the, kind of the cultural heritage.
Yeah.
What about all the people we need to respect that are gluten-free?
You know, the one on the right is gluten-free. It's the gluten-free option, Commissioner Creo, so we can just have two, what is, what is provide the gluten-free option for those folks. I, I was just looking at the symbolism, I actually didn't look at that, what, what symbolism, what, why wheat is on there, but it looks like it, it symbolizes a lot of times in, in different cultures, like abundance, harvest, prosperity, good fortune, so I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with keeping the wheat there.
And not on the other, I know. So that's why my book club now meets at restaurants, because I'm not making gluten-free stuff for people to eat when they come to my house, we're going to go out and we're going to, because I don't do that. Okay, yeah, yeah. Are we good to vote on this logo today? Yeah, because we don't need to have three hearings on this. I'd like to be able to use this.
Really quick, I just want to let you know, I did put them into grayscale on my computer, and they, it looks, it looks good in grayscale as well, with, even without me doing any like actual good professional touch-ups, but that might be something good, Consuelo, that, um, if, like, if you can actually get it professionally, like, if they can put it in grayscale for you as well, so we have that on file, that way it's not just based off of whatever the computer changes it to, um, that might be a good option too, like, if we know we're printing in black and white, to have it in grayscale and, and looking really nice. But just like a general, I just changed it to grayscale in general, and it looks fine.
Yeah, I, I had asked them to do that, so, I was waiting for the final.
Great, thanks, I, I appreciate that, and then, and I do, you've, you've done a lot of work on this, and I, and I really appreciate that, and I'll appreciate the invoice when it comes to it. So, okay, so I moved that the PEC approved the PEC logo, including the wheat as found in meeting materials, item 14, and ask CSD to include the logo on PEC documents.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manis?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correa?
No.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck, yes. There are, there are seven votes for and one vote against, the motion passes.
Well, we're, we haven't awarded any, right, yeah, yeah, no, I'm going to, I'll do it now. Award acknowledgement awards?
So, I'm clearly going to need prodding. We, um, I mean, should we try to schedule a time for next week to have an hour, at least on a Zoom for the three of us? Yeah, you, I think you are.
And?
And Becca, or I mean, Commissioner Burt?
I, I mean, I have a bigger, it's not, I think scheduling of subcommittees has been done haphazardly for a while, like, it'd be nice if we could get the CSD liaison to schedule monthly subcommittee meetings for all subcommittees, would be a really big help to work to coordinate and schedule subcommittee meetings.
What's that thing called, that program called where we are sent like three dates, the three of us, and then we choose between the dates and times?
Yeah, doodle, 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 doodle does it.
We can be doodled.
Do it.
Not to be confused with.
But I think, yeah.
Commissioners, Missy Brown is the liaison from the Charter Schools Division on this work, and so if you would like for her to schedule the members between now and your next meeting, that would be terrific, we can do that.
Thanks.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
And we'll have an agenda and everything. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burt.
Performance Framework Support Program, we've got, I don't know, I think there's 14 applicants now. We have not met to, to look at them, but we're, we are going to have to meet soon to look at those, because I think there's also a couple that may need a reach out to, to make some modifications. So we'll do that, and then I know the, um, there has, there, the amendment process for the REC, but there's already money at the REC for any awards that we would, that we would make, right? I thought there was, we already had money in the REC for that, and that additional money would come over, but I thought there was money, enough money that we moved around.
Chair Gibson, there is money that is under one of the current scopes of work that could be used for technical assistance without amending the IGA or increasing the amount in the budget for the IGA. As you know, I have not seen any of the proposals, I, I would ask, um, that again, CSD be part of the subcommittee meeting that takes a look at these proposals, and we are working on, as you mentioned earlier, increasing the total charge, charter 2% budget, and then we can submit a bar to increase the IGA amount.
Okay, so the amount isn't the issue at this point in time, it's what the REC is going to be able to provide, that there needs to be an amendment to that, because if it's goods, as an example, that would most likely be something the REC right now can't do. So the amendment is important to be able to provide goods, um, so that, I'm clear on. So some awards, some awards, we could potentially fairly quickly award, because it, or it is in the scope of the REC contract, but we will meet and we'll, we will be able to create something to quickly outline what would have to be in the amendment. Commissioner Burt?
Yeah, and I just want to once again ask that, that amendment for what the REC can do, that should be moving forward already, like, that should be, that has nothing to do with any bars or anything, so I would ask that that gets done yesterday.
My understanding is that that was the direction at the last budget subcommittee meeting.
And that we move that $100,000 from the closure into this fund as well. Those can be done outside of any.
That is correct, we can, outside of, outside of increasing the total IGA, we can move around scopes of work amounts to put into the technical assistance, needs-based technical assistance, I think is how it's worded, in the IGA, and we can do that, yes. Um, and I did get confirmation, last time I met with the group that is, um, on PEC working on this project, I was asked to check with the IG, with the SWREC to see if grants could include products, and the way that our IGA is written currently, it cannot fund that, it needs to fund, um, needs-based services, not items. Um, but I thought that, um, we would need to have a comprehensive conversation about what the, uh, what the schools are asking to, to be able to communicate then with the SWREC about potential supports for those schools, and so I'm asking for that meeting to happen.
Yeah, that we can, that we can do, but the movement of the money doesn't, that's not, the two aren't the same, so.
Moving money within the current IGA will take one day, it, that, that, that is not a time-consuming thing, but because we are borrowing from DFA to increase the total charter 2%, we cannot increase the IGA until that bar has been fully processed by DFA.
We don't need that yet, what we, what we need is the $100,000 to be reallocated and the additional, and it just needs to be general, goods and services, or whatever it needs to be, it should just be general, to where you can add on that we can buy products for schools who request products.
Okay, so the moving line items from one scope of work to the other, you consider that done like today, that can happen, but the amending the IGA to be able to pay for goods is an amendment to the IGA which will take a while.
So that's why I was hoping it would have already been filed by now.
Right, understanding that was in the October motion for that to happen, that to start happening, that was part of our October motion for that amendment process to start.
The motion was to increase the amount of funding into the IGA, and the question about the goods only was brought to my attention, uh, more recently to discover from the SWREC if it could pay for goods as well as services.
I, but, but you're conflating two things. So I understand that the, the, that the REC contract will need to be amended to, for the providing of goods, I get that, and that can be worked on, but the motion was for the money to move from here, the additional monies, the October motion was not just for the movement within the I, within the REC now, the motion was to, for the process to begin to get the additional monies too, so that, that was, that, that was part of the October motion.
Yes.
Okay, and it hasn't, we're just waiting for that, so it's... And it hasn't, we're just waiting for that, so it's a few months. Performance, uh, oh, I'll just give you an update. We had a discussion yesterday, and the chemist, the deputy secretary is looking at where the, she thought, she did not know that the contract hadn't been. So we're, we're working, she's looking into that. Okay, we're on to item number 15, discussion and update on the performance framework templates and the status of posting. Bridget, is that you?
Yes, it is, Chair Gibson. We will have corrected versions of all option two templates on the website today. Dr. Faulkner has corrected everything in the PSAT, caught another error earlier this week in the other templates and corrected it, and it will be up today. Then next week, we will work on the Caesar Chavez Option Three template for next, for the current year's cohort. We have all the option two templates that we need. The only school that is using an assessment that's not in the current option two templates are the option three schools. One of the schools is using an assessment called DRA III. Two of them are using Renaissance STAR, one is using ACT Work Keys. So we have to create those templates that will feed into the option three templates for the three, option three schools. But the option two schools are all using IMSA and WEA or one of the PSAT SAT.
Thanks, I appreciate that update. Discussion of possible action, if calendar changes for November ends, oh, sorry. Sure, doesn't matter.
So, we, the, the main change is that in December of 2025, we originally, or we currently have it, that we're gonna do the renewal hearings the 15th through the 19th. And we felt that, number one, 18 and 19, a lot of charter schools are actually out of school. Plus, that's a crazy week for charters that are in school, they're finishing up all their grading and all that stuff, and, you know, having to deal with that, the administrators have to deal with that. So we're doing basically what we're doing this year, which is just moving it back a week to the 8th, 8th through the 12th. What's not on my calendar, and maybe it's on yours, I didn't see that, that means we would have to move the work session in November from the 13th back to the 6th to get the 30 days of notice by the chair. So that's the main thing. So that's the thing we'd have to vote on. I also just want to, for a reference point, in February and March, that, that calendar, am I looking at the right calendar, 2025 PEC calendar, 8/26? It says revise 9/19, but that doesn't have it back to the 8th through the, through the 12th. Okay, so what we want to do is we want to move it back to the 8th through the 12th. And then we have to move the work session from the 13th to the 6th.
We have a work session on the 20th and the 21st, 20th of November and one on the 13th?
One on the 13th, which would then become the 6th.
Virtual.
Would be that virtual to provide input to the chair for the, for the letter.
Okay.
So that's all, it, it's a quick, it's a virtual work session.
Okay. We're moving the.
Full work session on the 20th.
We're moving that to the 6th.
We're moving that to the, the work session that's for November 13th, we would move, it's virtual once again, to the 6th.
Keeping the 2021.
Yeah.
As our meeting dates.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
That, to me, sounds okay. But the December thing, we're only doing renewals on the 15th, 16th, and 17th, there's only eight.
Right.
And then we have our work session and meeting.
So my concern is if the, if there's a school, if there's a school that needs to come up because we have a concern, they may not be in session because they're, and I'm not ask, I'm not asking people if they're on break to, you need to be up here to, to speak with us. We, so, and it's a challenging time for schools or anyone, even if we want people to listen to our work session, and they're, you know, they're closing out a semester, and I just, it's just a really, really difficult.
And they're likely not on break, because look at when, how the days fall through school year. They're likely not coming back to school until.
They're likely on break on that Friday.
Thursday.
Well, maybe Thursday, but definitely Friday. That'll be their last day of school, most likely.
And all we're doing is moving it one day from today, like, this year we started on the 9th, next year we would start on the 8th. It's the same week.
We did the exact same thing this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Will we need all three days, or can we do what we did this year, three, three, and two on the work session day? So we go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
We're just, we're scheduling that out, we, we probably won't.
Okay.
We probably won't, but if we have some districts that switch over to us, we just have it allocated out if we need it. Probably we won't need Monday, but it's just there, it's a holding spot.
It's easier to take away.
Yeah.
For most people's.
Yeah, yeah.
To add an extra.
Exactly.
So to be clear, we're just moving the week that starts the 15th to start the 8th.
Correct.
Done. Okay, and the other thing we're doing is moving the 13th in November to the 6th.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion that we can make?
Do we have a corrected document?
We do not have a corrected document.
And we should have actually a calendar with that new great seal that we have and all the people and pictures and.
Wheat.
And the wheat, there needs to be something about.
I think I.
Is the motion done?
Motion without document updated.
I think they're doing it right.
I mean, I could just, I could make a motion that's to move those dates instead of waiting, or I don't, whatever you guys want to do.
No.
Do it.
All right, I move that the PEC adopt a new calendar for 2025, moving the meetings scheduled for the week of December 15th to the week of December 8th, and the work session from November 13th to November 6th.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Burt, a second by Commissioner Carrillo, Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Manus. Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham. Chair Gibson, Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yep.
Don't do that to me. Secretary Beck, yes, there are seven votes for and zero votes against, the motion passes.
Thank you, we are on to item number 17.
Really quickly, consular, if you're listening, if you can just make sure to change on the new calendar with a revision date on the bottom, so the calendars don't get confused. Thank you.
Just quickly made those changes in the document.
And then change the revision, thank you so much.
Item number 17, discussion of notifications.
Chair Gibson? KT has a 10 reading.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah. Discussion of notifications that result in a school being out of compliance. And.
So this is the first reading, Missy Brown has already outlined it. There are many times where a governing board drops a member and then is gonna pick up a new member, and they do not go below five. There is a process in your documents that allows CSD to give them an extension if needed. There are times where, just like we heard today, a board falls below five, and the question, and the question that Missy raised earlier is, do you want to not give that school an automatic extension if they fall below five? We are changing our processes so that we flag those schools that we need to make sure we keep an eye on. Because, for example, Six Directions, I think, had been out of compliance for many months, and so we need a better process to identify that. But the question on the form is, and that Missy was seeking clarification on, is, do you want to limit the extension to schools that have more than five board members? It's the first reading, so we're gonna talk about it again because it's not urgent. And, and actually, I didn't know if you had an opinion, Missy, I mean, from a legal perspective, it makes me nervous, so I don't want the extension, but if there's a practical reason, you should consider that.
So for me, I have some, I know, I have some angst over the extension when they're, when they're out of compliance and they, and they fall below five. You know, if they're, so that's, you know, I'm, I understand giving them the time to fill it, fine, but I have some concerns about giving them that additional extension time when they're no longer a board of finance. I think, you know, Bridget?
Chair Gibson, I agree completely. If, if they are below the required five members, I would not, I would not want to give them the 30-day extension.
I agree.
So does that, so does that mean a five-member board, they lose somebody, they're down to four, they don't get an extension, or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, but once again, we're not voting on it until next month, but that's the, that's the direction.
But they'll have, they'll still have 45 days to fill that spot, right? But they don't get the.
Yes, they don't get 75 days to fill it. Right? Yeah.
10 days, I want 10 days. Are you 10?
No.
And then just clarifying, CSD will not put any school on the consent agenda that drops them below five. It'll just be listed like North Point was. So it'll just be identified, North Point isn't out of compliance, they're in compliance, they actually turned in their paperwork, but we're just keeping an eye to make sure. Dreamed an A, I just put them on the list for January. So, so that you aren't inadvertently taking action that you don't realize that we've just got to keep an eye on it.
Right. Okay, all right, so we'll vote on that hopefully next month. Okay. Item number 18, discussion, we don't, I don't have anything for item number 18. Hopefully I'll have an absolute update. Item number 19, discussion on the NACA conference highlights and possible inclusion of concepts into PEC practices. I think I, for me, I think I mentioned this last month, I don't know if I did it to everyone or just to some. One of the practices that the state of Arizona does that I was interested in is, and they have 500 charters, they have a lot of charters, because they do have CMOs and so on. What they do in the renewal process, if there's a school that they potentially were not going to renew, they, they enter into an agreement with that school. It's obviously voluntary. They enter into an agreement with that school that they go on a one-year performance contract. And there's absolute benchmarks that are created in that negotiated contract. And if the school doesn't meet those benchmarks by the end of the first year, what would be the first year of a new contract, they're not extending them a five-year contract. But the next school year, if they don't meet those benchmarks, there's an agreement in that performance contract that the school is closed and there is no appeal. They, they do, the school's closed. What, I don't know technically whether they're relinquishing or the state, or the entity, the authorizer is taking it. There's been an agreement that the school will close. Correct, correct. It's, it's, the state of Arizona has been fairly successful with that, with this. Obviously, the school is agreeing to give up their right to appeal. The, Arizona started it because they were having so many appeals. This was a way of reducing the amount of litigation because they were giving that one-year additional year, will still give you one, a one-year opportunity to make significant enough changes that we have confidence that we would go forward with another four years of the contract. Or, or I don't want to speak, I don't know exactly how many years our contracts are, but for us, it would be the additional four. So I think it, for me, it's something I'd like to look into, what it would look like. And because I think it has maybe merit, you know?
So what's, what's the carrot, with the charter school?
That they get to continue and they don't have to go through costly litigation. Because many of the schools can't afford the litigation. So it does give them a chance to try to stay open when they might just automatically close then because they don't have the funds to litigate. And for me, I get challenged with litigation because if you're a school that has a foundation, you can afford that litigation. But if you're that small little school that doesn't have a foundation, you're just automatically closing because you don't have the funds to do that. So I think there's a equity issue built into that in giving them the opportunity to continue, potentially. You know, so it saves the state, it saves the schools, and then the schools, instead of litigation, can use that money that year to help support the school instead of, no offense, wasting it on a lawyer. You know, it's, it's funds that can go help support kids. So it's kind of, to a great extent, a win-win. So Commissioner Carrillo and then Commissioner Burt.
So it's kind of their last gasp for life, is how I'm hearing it. Okay, and it's at the discretion of the commission, not of the school, is that correct? We decide whether or not they get that extra year, they don't.
Benchmarks that are agreed to.
To enter into some of the, the commission's deciding whether or not they're gonna be given this opportunity, and they have to agree to these benchmarks.
I think, I think the offer for, for that additional year, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but I think it's an automatic, here it is, here, you're not gonna be renewed, here's the, here's the, because if you're not renewed, you have that automatic option for that appeal, whoever you are. So the commission votes to not renew the contract. Then if the, then they enter into the agreement with the school after the decision to not renew has taken place, that here is an option to not go forward with litigation and the appeal, but you have the opportunity if you choose to enter into this performance contract.
Then can the commission choose not to afford them that option?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I would want that to be a part of it, because I'd want there to be the, well, there's gonna be a case here or there, who knows when, but that, no, no, you blew it. Under no circumstance are we gonna give you a year to screw the, your whole program up even more and waste another third grade. You know, I'd, I like the idea, and then they, conceptually, of they have that year, just, and, and it also has to be, to me, where there's the agreement that it's black and white. You have these benchmarks, it's not getting close to 80%, you're at 80 or you're not, stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's something that we, if, if this is something we want to move forward on, that's something we would look at. We don't have to make those decisions now. Commissioner Burt.
I love that you brought this one up because this is one that I definitely was very interested in as well, and I actually ended up talking to the Arizona folks for a lot longer after their presentation about it as well, because I was just so interested, because they had so much data to back up what they were doing, and that's what really sold me. So, and actually, I pulled up all my notes because of this agenda coming up, and I have a lot of notes on this one, but it actually is in, in lieu of revocation, I don't know if they do it for renewals.
They do.
Okay. And it is for every, so it's for every school, and every single school has the same exact terms as well, because they were also getting hammered with arbitrary and capricious decisions. So when you say, oh, we'll let this, we'll do it, but not this school, or this school, but not this school, like, then that's what their experience was, when they, if they tried to do that, then the courts would say, oh, well, you let this school, but not this school, that's arbitrary and capricious, the school gets to stay open. So they really basically took all of the, there is nothing arbitrary or capricious because it's extremely clear, it's very simple, actually, it's, it's, it was really like such a brilliant, I don't know which of their team like thought this up to try to get out, to like fix this issue, but it really was a brilliant solution to it. And just to give you all some of the like data that they had to support it, between, between a seven year time period, they had 31 schools placed on a three year agreement, and they have to make gains every year or they will be closed. 18 schools successfully, exited successfully and continued to sustain and improve letter grade, 85.7% improved, which they use the A through F system, so obviously ours will have to, we'll have to figure out something different, but for 87, or 85.7% of the schools that they did this for, improved a letter grade in one year. 46.4% of them improved a letter grade to an A or a B in one year. I mean, it, it really was like, basically, they told the schools like, make a drastic, make a drastic change or close, like, that's it. And the data is showing them that the schools are, are doing it, or they're, or they're closing, and it's not, they're not having to go through litigation when the schools close, because the schools agreed that if they do not show that, if they do not show improvement, they agree to close. So you can't go back to a court later and be like, well, yeah, we agreed to that, and yeah, we didn't improve, but we still want to stay open. Like, it just removes all of the, it removes all the areas of litigation, but they really did hinge it on that they applied it not equitably, equally, I mean, they just applied the same exact standard all across the board to every single school. And that was the, really the way in which they were able to experience that level of success as far as actually eliminating the litigation.
So let's put this on work session agenda so that we can parse it out. This, this is close to your kind of turnaround thing, you've got to turn yourself around.
Yeah, quick, um, I have a, I don't know, I have another topic to bring up too. So there was a, a really incredible session that I went to, what, this was probably my favorite one, and it was, the name of it was, how do you know when schools are ready to grow? The Bellwether Foundation worked with State of Georgia Commission, and they created basically a rubric for replication or adding grade levels, expansion, anything where you're adding more kids to a current system, basically. And they created a whole matrix of dimensions that they look at, that's very data oriented. And it felt very, very robust, especially compared to what we look at, when we're looking at schools expanding, replicating, looking, you know, moving, getting, having more students come into their system. And I'm wondering if, if there was a lot of work already done on it, so I don't think it would be hard to just review what's already been done and see if there's any thing that we can do to help make ours more robust as well. But there was a lot of information, and Bellwether is, they have a grant to help support, like commissions doing this work. So that's something else, like if the commission would be interested in it, you know, like add a work session, actually get some more information, I also wonder if Bellwether would be able, like, we'd be able to get into the work with them and be able to use some of the resources that they have out there to help us with that. It was.
Commissioner Burt, which state did you say, or which authorizer is working on that?
Georgia. Uh, Georgia already implemented it.
Thank you.
And I know, speaking of Bellwether, I know they actually, they, so they have a whole system because they come in and they'll do a review of your school and give you a report back as to whether they feel you're, because they, and that's because they have support grants for that, but yeah, they're, to me, they've already done 99.9% of the work, so why not?
And even better, it's predominantly Carrie Ervin's work, which we know her, like, as one of our keynote speakers, right? So when I talked to her about, she was actually like really excited, she's like, oh, my gosh, yeah, it'd be great to like be able to work with New Mexico. So this, I think it would be, I, even if it's not, I mean, I think the matrix that they created is really robust and really like, I mean, it's, it's good. So I also just wonder how else we could, if it doesn't fit into that, maybe, maybe still there's, like, looking through what they've developed still could help us in other ways as well, even if it's not that exact thing. So I would.
If it might, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if it might not be worthwhile to have even a session at the Charter School Conference for schools to say, hey, are you ready to grow so that they, you know, so that they can look at that and say, this is what the, you know, this is, this is what we're generally recommending, this is what you need to be at, so that schools, you know, because a lot of schools think they might be ready, and maybe they're not, and they, and they can take a look at what they would need to work on so that they could be ready. So I think even outside of that, for school, for us to support schools in being ready. So, so we'll look at that on our end for a work session and hopefully work on.
Well, what?
June session.
You're going to love this even more because it actually incorporates what you just talked about, it incorporates it into the procedures and processes of applying.
Yeah.
So it's actually, it actually is very comprehensive, and they have a lot of information about what the board should be looking at and actually looking at it about two years before you decide you want to grow, and the planning and processing of that, and a lot, how the, how Georgia does it is they actually have the board start doing some of these reviews, and they have to show evidence of the reviews up to two years before they apply for growth.
Okay, all right, thanks for that. I attended a revocation closure, it wasn't, it was called a closure one. Those are kind of difficult, only because a lot of the closures that were being spoken about, and what do you do with a closure, they were closures because CMOs were closing them, so that it really wasn't a decision that was, that was being made by the authorizer. Many CMOs have enrollment quotas, and if you don't meet that, and I'll give you an example, Washington DC had a school, the three days before school was going to open, the CMO said, you didn't meet your quota, so therefore you're done. And it was in an area that was definitely economically disadvantaged, families had already bought the uniforms, and now they're, they're stuck, and it was more what they do to help support getting kiddos into a school and trying to find funds to help get them new uniforms, and so it's a world that we don't live in, thank heavens. I thank my lucky stars every time I go to these conferences that we don't have CMOs, because they look bright and shiny, and they do offer often a nice building and a lot of stuff, but they can, even though you have a contract with them, they can drop that contract in a day, and the only, because they know, you're not going to be able to sue me because you don't have any money to sue me, so they just walk away, and it's just, you know, education shouldn't be that kind of business. It is a business, but it shouldn't be that kind of business. And I am very grateful that whoever helped to craft the legislation here in New Mexico, I don't know whether they purposely looked at that, but someone thought about it, and it's in there, and I do appreciate that. So we've got our mission as we move forward for, for next year, so I don't know, is, Commissioner Mina is still on, I don't know if his hand is up because I can't see those.
He went, right?
He went, that's why I'm asking.
He is still on, but I don't see his hand.
Okay, all right, just checking. So, and I think that's a lot to, to offer, or time, so thanks for that.
Everybody went, I know I couldn't go, I think like eight of 10 went, I would love to hear, no matter going to any sessions that were, because we haven't discussed this a lot.
Well, I did my discussion.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you know, taxpayers paid for everybody to go, you have something
Those, uh, those conferences are so kind of overwhelming at times, and I, I have to admit, it's, I haven't had a chance to really reflect on it and be able to say something about it. I did go to quite a few conferences, I was, went to everyone I could, but I, I can't say that I.
Unless you report out by February, you can't go to anywhere. Whoever.
Commissioner Creel, I'll share just a little bit. I mean, I, well, it was the first time I went to anything since I, since I've been on, on, on the commission, but the one that like jumps out to me, I went to the Transcend Group, they, they were the, what do you call it, the keynote speaker, and so I went to the follow-up session with them, just to learn about like the way that they think about re-envisioning education. Some of our charter schools do a similar kind of model in terms of like thinking about, I, I, I'm not doing it justice, but it's kind of like the, like the, like, the schools have a specific kind of individual planning kind of for, for children, for K-12 experiences, like, like tracks that are a little bit different. And I was more, I had, had lunch with the person, Alon Samoa was the keynote speaker, and he, I had lunch with him to talk about like how does this apply to like rural education? Oftentimes, urban education is the center of almost everything within charter schools and in education in general. And so I was like really interested in thinking about how would that work in very small districts like we have here in the state, as well as like our smaller charter schools that are in rural education. So this is a good conversation to kind of think through, how do we take innovative approaches to education, but not leave behind a lot of the young people in, in the more rural, rural or like frontier areas of our state? So I think that was the biggest thing that I took away from. Some of the other things, other sessions, I thought were, were good, but that was one that I was really thinking about in terms of like true transformation that we could
Report from the Charter Schools Division.
Thank you, Chair Gibson. First, the update on CSD staff positions, this is in your, this is in your folder, but the one I'm sharing on screen right now shows our vacancies in bright yellow. So currently, there are 17.5 positions in the Charter Schools Division, and two of them are vacant, so we have 15 full-time staff plus our half-time IT person. And I would like to introduce, I'm thrilled to introduce to you today, our newest authorizing practices administrator, Greg Boots, who is going to tell you a little bit about himself.
Yeah, I'm Greg Boots, and it is spelled B-U-T-Z. I've had a, a long educational career, before I was a public school teacher in New Mexico, I taught overseas, so I was, I got my first teaching gig in Hong Kong, I taught there for two and a half years, and then I did some volunteer work, working with displaced people groups in Amman, Jordan, working in an adult language center, and then Thailand, working with, volunteering with orphans right on the border of Myanmar, so a lot of equity background for me. I then taught for six years in Egypt, and I lived through several revolutions and a military coup, and saw five different governments in six years, so that was a lot of fun. But this is a bit of a homecoming for me because the first job that I had was at Cottonwood Classical Preparatory School here in New Mexico. Actually, Sam Obenchain was my executive director, and so when I was in Egypt, I gave him a call and I said, in the instance, a job were to open up, and he said, just so happens we have a job, so interview. So this is going to be kind of a full circle for me in more than one way. I taught at Cottonwood Classical for four years as a teacher, social studies teacher, and then became a director of communications, a head of department, a dean of students, and there was maybe a few other hats that I was wearing simultaneously. So I did that for four years and then jumped into some other admin roles as both an assistant principal at a large comprehensive high school in Albuquerque, and I also was a school ambassador fellow with the Department of Education concurrently at that time. But after that, I decided to jump into PED, and I knew, always knew that I was going to come and land here in the charter division. So I've worked with the team with contract work and authorizing schools and looking at those applications, and I've joined on several site renewal teams, even at the College and Career Readiness Bureau. So this is a real exciting moment for me, so happy to be here.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
And thanks for jumping in during this week.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Good seeing you all, yes.
What great adventures you've had.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks very much for joining us.
And commissioners, we have, thanks to the budget adjustment request that will increase the charter 2% budget, we now have, will, we will have funding for a fourth education administrator in the authorizing group. So we are, we are happy that in the spring we'll be interviewing, and we will have four full-time site visit team members and leads, which is going to be a huge game changer for us. The financial coordinator position also remains vacant.
Is it advertised?
It is not currently advertised. I don't, I don't believe it is. The second on our list is the notice of intent to submit a charter school application. I looked at that document just about 20 minutes ago and realized that there were some errors on it, it said 2024, so Missy has edited that, so it says 2025 now, there was a blank page in the middle that Missy has taken out, and the, the header with the, the chair and the secretary's names looks a little sloppy, so we'll fix that before we post it.
So I thought we were establishing processes where we didn't put exact dates in our, you know, so that, or, or we?
We can make that edit as well.
You know, that it just say what the statute says, the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Of January, so that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be looked at every, that's a, you know, there it is, there's the notice of intent.
We can make that change as well, and we can put the exact date in January 2025 on the website.
On the website, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Corrective action plans, our contractor continues to work with Estancia. Um, corrective action plans. Um, our contractor continues to work with Estancia Valley Classical Academy and review their data and they are complying. Um, Alma is also complying. I'm awaiting um, information from the Office of Special Education. Um, as to manifestation determinations for disenrolled students. Um. Language and culture concerns have been resolved for all charter schools and um, schools are cooperating with the language and culture division.
I have a question on that one. What were our language and culture concerns and why were these schools singled out?
Um, there were monitoring, uh, Chair Gibson and Commissioner Creo, um, letters came out from the PED Language and Culture Division. Regarding concerns that that division had regarding schools. Monitoring and reporting and serving EL processes. And so there were detailed letters that went out to a handful of charter schools. And those charter schools have been working with language and culture to resolve those, those concerns. It didn't originate with the CSD. It originated with language and culture, which reviewed school processes.
Yeah, they do it with the safety plans and O- OSC does it. They establish corrective action plans with the schools.
And maybe I'm just kind of, I don't know. How does that work with a cyber academy? Language, you're not typing fast enough? I don't know. How do?
Well, I mean, the cyber academies still have to identify English learners in order to provide services.
That just seemed odd.
There are some schools that whose processes are not correct in terms of how do you identify ELS in the first place. And it's things like that.
All right, thank you.
It's harder to monitor how ELD, English Language Development Instruction is being delivered in cyber schools, of course.
Okay. Um, can I just ask that the um, we received a document related to Alma. In regards to the OMA. Violation. There was a document that was um, provided from the Attorney. Attorney General's Office.
The, the new, the Attorney General's Office, yes. We, we received that just this week. Yes.
Can that be put into the Alma materials? Yeah, it, yeah. The commissioners will be able to look at that. It just um, it was this week that it came in. Thanks.
So it will be in the, the, the school's intervention ladder, reports from other entities folder.
Okay. Are we good?
And Bridget, they're probably already, I know there is another OMA letter, so they should all maybe do a full.
Yes, in the same, in the same folder.
So item number twenty-one, uh. The status of new contract. Attachments to align with the PEC. Form changes, sorry. Um. We just go, we made changes to the performance framework based last month. Based on the information that came from the, excuse me, the deputy director on. These are the nine schools that chose option two. So we have, we renewed eleven last year. But two of them chose option one. So they're, they were not affected by the performance framework change because there was a. Concern that was raised about attenuation and students that are being masked. And we made the changes to the performance framework last month.
Correct.
That performance framework doesn't align with the performance framework. Of the nine, of those nine schools. So that there's going to be a letter going out. To ask those schools to amend that contract to align with the new language of the performance framework. That we voted on last month. I'm sorry. Okay, so if I could ask the deputy director to. Sim- draft a memo identifying what that concern was and the change, I'd appreciate it. Okay?
Yes.
Thanks. Item number twenty-two, discussion of possible action to provide input, the chair, to speak on behalf. I don't think anyone has anything. Okay. Okay.
I guess I need to um, challenge you again to write a letter to um. Either Dokeian or, or.
Oh, is that?
For my, for, in case I ha- I need to.
Correct. I thought, okay.
Me about that a couple of times.
I have to double check on that. I thought I had.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks. I, I thought that was done. So I will double check. Okay. PEC comments. I'm just looking.
That's what I was just.
No, oh, I'm sorry. Um, no, Rain spoke to me yesterday and said, because of the conference, they won't have anyone here today. So I, I apologize.
I would like to let the commission know that I have just emailed Matt Paul your calendar for twenty twenty-five.
Oh, yes, and I, I did speak with him when he was here with Turquoise Trail to let him know that we were most likely making that change. And he texted his.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, yeah. So we shouldn't have that conflict, but they, they will not be here today. So that's why we skipped it. Sorry. Um, PEC comments. Commissioner Brower.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I wish you all just a wonderful holiday and, and um. And I uh, just feel really honored to be here with y'all. And this has been really good the last couple of months as we spent, you know, every waking hour together for a whole week. It's uh, it's just really nice to be part of uh, this group. Uh, please don't forget your popcorn and your blue cornflower. Uh, Becca, if I can see you before uh, winter break or maybe after the holidays, I'll get you some from the, from the farm. But this is some stuff we're really proud of, uh, if you haven't gotten it yet. Um, but I uh, I also just want to reiterate the, what I kind of shared last month. Like it's just really good to be here with a group of people who are really committed to affect change in our. In the lines that we're supposed to make change and to have just a diversity of politics here in the room where we can just get good work done. In a moment in our country where, you know, next month as we move forward through a peaceful transition that, you know, there's. There's always the need for us to choose our better angels as we work together and we don't, I know I don't get that all the time from other circles that I run in. And I just really am thankful for us to be able to sit down here and do a lot of work elbow to elbow um, that matters. And it's kind of like not void of our own personal thoughts and practices and politics. But we don't let that stuff get in the way and we, we treat each other with respect and love. Um, uh, and I just appreciate that a lot. And I'm really grateful for that, especially during this moment of the year. So happy holidays to you all.
Thanks. And. I will echo all of that, you know, happy, safe holidays. Enjoy family and friends. Um, I just want to thank everyone. CSD staff, it's, you know, it takes a huge village to get us to this week and as hard as this week was. I fully recognize all of the time and effort and energies that went into um, getting us here. Thank you all for yesterday. Um, the Pasoli and the Carne, everything was just, and it was nice to, to sit down and, and enjoy. And every, everyone sitting here, the discussions are always great, you know, and this was the best renewal. Cycle that, you know, we were able to celebrate schools, but still have tough conversations with the schools. And it's, it's respectful and they, you know, they went away. There were times when I sat on this commission that. Those discussions towards the school were not very respectful. And that was always challenging on my part from, you know, those that were voicing it. So I really appreciate um, everyone's effort. So thank you. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, uh, again, ditto. Um, especially to um, the Charter School Division for all the work that you put in. To have us uh, prepared um, for uh, these um, meetings. It was really, really, I know how much, I don't know how much work it was, honestly. But it was, it was probably a ton of work. And uh, yeah, it's a great place to be with you guys and, and uh, I'm, I'm really getting to uh. Really, you know, you, I'm, I'm an old sixties, seventies kind of, you know, soft rocker guy, but I'm starting to kind of get to the uh, really liking mariachi.
Commissioner Creo.
Love mariachi. It was such a highlight. It was a great week, just all the schools in November and the ones we just did. It was a grueling week in a lot of ways because of the attention that it requires. And um, thank you to CSD for everything you do. And it's not easy putting on this kind of show. So um, just thanks. And I just uh, just very proud of. You know, I tell people all the time how proud of us as a commission I am because they ask about all the politics and I say, none of that enters into it. I mean, there's five hours and five D's and it never comes up because there's only one thing that's important, the E. Education, kids, right? So anyway, I just love that we're so singularly focused and I believe we do a very good job.
Thank you. I, I want to say I'm looking forward to being home and popping popcorn, just sitting there, my sweatpants and sweatshirt and, you know. Not having to think for a while. So thank you for that. Um, we, I know we already populated some things for our agendas going forward. Does anyone have anything else you want on the agenda for January or?
A work session of an agenda and possibly ongoing. So I, what I wrote down, and it can be wordsmithed. Strategies for our state chartered tribal schools to increase supports and outcomes. I had one other comment. Um, I, I, I know our year's coming to a close and I really enjoyed working with uh. Chair Gibson and Vice Chair Creo and the executive team. It's, it's been wonderful. So.
It's mutual. It's, it's been a, it, it's been a good collaboration. I, I do appreciate. And that's certainly, I appreciate the extra time that folks are putting in.
My God, you need to be on salary.
I know.
Should we put that on the work session?
I think I'd have to resign then. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Safe travels, everyone.
And rest up and.